All right, welcome to the work session in Buchanan City Commission Wednesday, November thirteenth, nine AM. You can do roll call please.
Weeden.
Here.
Bianski.
Yeah.
Money.
Present.
Swem.
Here.
George.
Here.
Yellicore.
Thank you. Items for discussion year-to-date budget, achievements, and goals going forward for the upcoming year. Mr. Lynch, I think you're in.
Okay. I'll start out with the big board over here. And then we'll go get into the revenue and expense report. I just, I just dragged this out because it kinda shows what we had put as our goals last March. And as I look through here, we, we've actually accomplished a few things. Higher priority things were capital planning and code enforcement. I think we're making progress on that. Uh, let's see, uh, we're gonna talk about this today, fire spation, future Catherine Park equipment, we're looking at some of that today. Victory Park, we, we did complete that project and had the grand opening there. We do have some funds out there for park equipment right now. We're working on the boat launch. Chipper, that's on there, and as we get to the bottom, I know we, we just fixed up our chipper. And I, I think that's a candidate for maybe a salvage sale, we'll get a new one with some other equipment. Oh, let's see here. DDA, we're addressing that. Thought I saw it, the new sweeper, we can click that one off our list. We have not addressed the tractor for the baler and the side mower. Budget actual reporting, we're gonna go over the revenue and expense report today, we're doing real good keeping up with our revenue and expense reports. Uh, let's see, what else we got on here? I thought I saw on here the Hoven wall and the McCoy Creek covert, which we awarded one last night, we're gonna bid the other one here in the coming weeks. So, those are some of the things we've gotten done. We've closed out the loans for the infrastructure, we've got contracts signed for the downtown infrastructure, uh, we're, and we're, so we're moving forward on all those as well.
What's the actual dates for starting?
March.
And then, when is it gonna be on Front Street? When is it actually gonna be on Front Street?
We haven't got a full schedule yet, but we're gonna start.
It probably won't be this summer though, will it?
I can't say for sure, Dan.
Okay.
I remember it being, Front Street was phase two, so I think that will be the twenty twenty-six, uh, piece of that. I think this year, if I'm not mistaken, it's from the back of the plant out to Red Bud and maybe down that way.
Right, they were gonna start at the wastewater treatment plant, and I believe that's what they wanna get going on in March.
Right.
Because there's a new inflow line to replace that one that we had failed on us.
Yeah.
So, now we got the, before you, we had the revenue and expense report through October thirty-first. And October thirty-first, that's about thirty-three percent through the year. And as you look through here, on our revenue side, and we're not gonna go line by line by twenty, give you a general idea, I think we're in pretty good shape on the revenue expenses for, through October thirty-first. On the revenue side, we brought in sixty-six percent of our revenues, which I guess is to be expected considering the, uh, the tax scheduling, tax receipt schedule. On the general fund, for the most part, each individual category is below thirty-three percent or right about thirty-three percent. So, we're looking pretty good there. We have, we have done the transfer for the building authority. If you look at the police, they're at twenty-six percent of expenses at ten thirty-one. And there may be some lagging payroll issues and things like that, but for the most part, we're pretty much up to date. Fire department's at twenty-seven percent. DPW is at about twenty-four percent. Cemetery, twenty-four percent. Parks at thirteen percent, so we have some, uh, funding to do there, and I know we have some requests for some, um, funding for the parks. Overall expenditures for the general fund is at forty percent, but you, you've got some transfers and payrolls in there as well, pretty large ones. The major street, local streets, little bit up on expenses, but we, temporarily, we've housed the street sweeper expenses to that.
Okay.
So, that's, that, our efficiency raises to that.
Okay.
Then when you go to the water sewer fund. Looking back at, uh, page twelve of thirteen. Through ten thirty-one, we brought in forty-five percent of our revenues, the budget. On the expense side, we're at twenty-five percent on the sewer side. Twenty-seven percent on the water side. We concluded our bond payments in there. And so, that being said, at October thirty-first, total expenditures, water sewer are at thirty-seven percent, and the revenues are at forty-five percent. So, we're gonna start getting into drilling down into some of these different accounts. But overall, at October thirty-one, we're generally in good shape on pretty much the whole financial picture for the city.
So, I just, so, the rest of the committee here, I think this has been a massive work in progress by the finance team, Dev and Courtney and Tim apartment head, et cetera. But, uh, this was kinda the, the straw that broke the camel's back when the first city manager was removed because we couldn't get this dialed in, we couldn't understand how money was moving, things were being put in places that didn't make sense. Uh, so now, you can pick this document up and have an accurate understanding of where we are at in each line item. And some of these, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna spend things at one time a year, not touch that for the rest of the year, so there'll be deals where their percentage of the budget's higher than others. But for the most part, uh, this is really dialed in, and bank reconciliations, you'll see, you'll start getting, we're balancing to zero again, like major, major, major improvements, um, in understanding where our books are at. So, we can make big decisions like we, we will do outside of this meeting here in the near future. Great work, guys, this is really, really important.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's, there's, like you said, there's some of these that we will not have to touch as such, and still, you know, it'll be there in our coffers, so.
Yeah.
Good.
They've done a great job. Oh, man of the hour.
God, geez, yeah.
We're looking at you because of all those letters that people are calling about.
Craig Miller, OIC, what's OIC, Craig?
Yeah. Can I let Norma look at this?
Yes.
You wanna look at this?
All right. All right, so a lot to cover.
Just give it back to me.
So, do you want us to, Tim, do you want us to just jump right into?
Yeah, go ahead and jump into your commissioner.
Do you wanna hit your topics first, though? Policy stuff?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Well, I'll start by.
I'll defer to the commission.
I'll start by apologizing, uh, when this came out, uh, I had my veteran here, and I wasn't able to sit down and fill this out. But I see there's a lot of things on here that I've written down, and then there's a couple of things I'd like to add, so.
Okay, you wanna tell us what you wanna add?
Well, actually, I was, uh, the thrill on the hill, the fire inspection reports are one of them, park equipment was another one I had. I'd like to look at, uh, when we, when we start our infrastructure and, and, uh, maybe the front street thing. Digital signs downtown, I'm not sure what, uh, what the, the cost of those are, I've seen them in some other cities. And, uh, they work well for other smaller cities, you know, I've, I'm not, I'm talking about small towns such as Buchanan, you know, uh, front street type things, so. Like I said, I, I, I don't know a cost, I don't know what it takes to do them, but I do know that, or I think I know that it could be a bit of a savings, and then I think I might be able to help somewhere along the line with the expense of some of those.
Okay, great, yeah, that's great.
And then, uh, one of the other things is reports from some of our, uh, I'll say other, other committees such as the farmer's market and, but I think that's all gonna fall into that commons area, uh, so. Yeah, those are, those are some of the major ones I have, and of course, the fire department is always one of the ones on my list, so, yeah.
Start with fire, because there's fire on a couple of these, parks on a couple of these.
Can we jump to that?
Yeah, that's fun.
Yeah, it's real, I'd say we start, let's try to start with the stuff that, you know, a lot of us kinda have like-kind in, and then we can, after we get the stuff we're all uni- mostly universally wanna talk about, we can start picking off at the, the one timers on here, it's like fire department and fire inspections, I think it's a good place.
Fire department's a very big one, and he's, it's very near and dear to him.
Yeah, Tim even has a couple on here.
You know, um, I know we can't eliminate the fire department, but we need to completely restructure it. And we all know that Mike, for all intents and purposes, has no intentions of doing any fundraising, he has none. So, uh, I'm, I'm really surprised and shocked that the city has tolerated that for as long as they have. And I just wanna bring that up, I, I mean, when I say this stuff, I don't want anybody to take any of this personal. I look at what their job category is and what they do, and Mr. Adams has done diddly squat. Now, the city hasn't helped him, but it's kinda like wanting to get, go somewhere, if you're not on your best behavior, nobody's gonna transfer your butt in the sports, you know, nobody wants ya. So, when he's publicly stood up here and said, he's not doing nothing, well, all he has to do is delegate, and he refuses to even do that. I personally would like to see one fire chief, we're gonna have to keep a building in the city for a truck, for insurance purposes, I'm sure. But I think one fire chief to three communities, and I'm, the, the two, Bertrand and Buchanan are be- out behind this. The city has always drugged their feet on this, they have this infamous thing, you know, they do the snalja thing, and I get it, but I don't, because we don't have the money. And we just need to move forward. Our fire department is one of the least disciplined of all of them, we know that, you know, and I'm not putting Mike down for that either. But I know the other fire chiefs, I know the other fire departments, and we just, it's gonna be difficult to move on, just like with the police department. We're not getting any cooperation there either, you know, and I, it's very hard to be, sit up here and be as derogatory it is without being derogatory because it, it's derogatory on my part, but it's honest and it's truthful. And I'm tired of people having the titles and not doing the stinking jobs.
Okay, so, a lot of things in that.
But, I mean, it, it needed to all be said, because, you know, what of our thoughts on the fire department, are we gonna?
Let's start taking bites out of this.
Right.
So, the combination, right, that's gonna be something I would imagine, those are meetings that, when we hire the next city manager, they can start working out across the, across the aisle on the combination. But we still need to start planning, whether it's renovation of that building or new building, as well as there's equipment that needs to be bought, that's lifesaving equipment, and then we have an inspection program, so. Tim, you had the inspection program on your list, you wanna hit that as well as the equipment piece, so we can knock those two out?
We have a, a draft fire inspection program procedure. There's certain steps you gotta go through to implement the program, we did have some funding in there for a part-time fire inspector. And it's, it's a work in progress, but I, I wanted to bring it to our attention that we're still planning on implementing it. And speaking with Mike over there, they wanna get it started first year on business, on, for businesses, and then go into residential the following year.
Would that include our rental property owners?
That, yeah, that would, but I'm not sure if that would be considered the business side or the more of the residential.
Sure, so do you need, so you have a draft policy in place, right, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Fee structure figured out?
I think we need to get it approved at a commission meeting.
It's gotta be an ordinance first.
It's gonna be an ordinance.
The ordinance, we have a draft ordinance.
Okay.
We haven't had a chance to dive into it yet.
Okay.
Tim and I will be working on it shortly.
We authorized a fire inspector some time ago.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, to budget for it, you know?
And I think, I think they dropped the ball on that one, uh, didn't they?
We just.
I think it was that jumping.
No, no, really, we, we got, we have the language, and I got it when Tim Gainis was here.
Okay.
And it's just been one thing after another, we haven't really implemented it yet.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
So, that's.
I have some reservations about the whole reason for it. I mean, when you, fire inspector.
It's a revenue source.
Yeah, and it's part of our, I believe it's part of our insurance rating, that we can, we gain points by doing.
Coloma has, and I was, I've seen it happen, and they.
It almost, it almost into that, uh, that, what is it?
ISO.
The ISO, uh, as far, far as your fire rating and everything goes, you know, it's just like, you know, it's just like keeping a, a, uh, truck and, and maintenance equipment within the city boundaries. I mean, not only enhances, you know.
It enhances, and then you can actually expand the program into rentals, so then you do a rental inspection, and then you don't have slum lords and landlords. It's scheduling, I, I, the only reason why I know about this and I can speak on it is because at my pri- at Lincoln, we did this. It was a huge revenue, revenue source, our code enforcement officers in our fire departments were able to go do rental and business and fire inspections. It's not too hard to schedule, and it's a good revenue, and it keeps everybody safe.
Yeah, and not, I think Niles has it, it's, it's about getting ahead of a problem before, you know, you have a major building.
Well, we're not, I mean, we're starting at zero, Patrick, so I mean, you know, I mean, it's gonna be, somebody's been doing something forever, and they've been getting along, and all of a sudden they get a bunch of tickets, we're gonna have to handle this for kit gloves.
Yeah.
To a degree, you know, and I don't want humongous fines for something that's safe, but the newest regulations that were passed six months ago says it costs you ten thousand dollars to bring the shit up to code.
Well, this is more like, is there working fire alarms, is there water running, is there sewer, like, it's very, the stuff that I have, it's very minimal, it's just to make sure, like.
That being said, but then you got the human factor, and the douchebag, I mean, I'm sorry.
But we have a lot of calls from renters complaining.
Okay, okay, I know we got, I know we got a lot of slum lords in town.
And this is a lot of just basic stuff that they're doing, now, they did have, they did have kinda like an oversell us inspector for a while.
Yes.
And, uh,
And they wanted to inspect the business.
You got too much stuff on this cabinet too close to the ceiling, and if that's not alleviated, you know, that could be a fifty dollar fine, well, that ain't gonna happen.
Well, it's, it's definitely, it's gonna be a work in progress.
Those kind of things, so, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, uh, that's where they wanna go to, that's what they wanna do. And with the help of, well, you know, we had Tim Gainis here, uh, I think they were starting to move in that direction. But I mean, yeah, a common and basic sense is what's gonna have to, uh, drive a lot of this, but then, again, too, you know, you go into some of these downtown buildings, and this even go, this goes back years ago when I was there, they were fire hazards. And if anything caught on fire, or like at the top of Cameron's building, you know, and it, it could spread, uh, both ways real quick, and you had a serious issue going on. So, and a lot of that has been alleviated, so, but yeah, the fire inspection program, it is probably gonna be a must, and like you say, it's, it's a great revenue resource.
I don't wanna come across as harassing the business owners.
No, no.
You know, when we got all these slum lords in town that don't have, you know, they shut their toilets off and keep their renters, I wanna de- I wanna alleviate the complaints. I wanna do away with these money grubber pukes that we got in town, and we got a lot of them.
And you're on one as well, man, you must know a lot of more people that are bad than good, man, I'm not meeting these people, I've lived here for a long time.
You guys need to start hanging out with me, that's all.
I don't know that that's necessary. We got a lot, we got a lot to cover, guys, so, I think I'm hearing.
Yeah, as I say, we gotta move out to one topic.
Let's keep the foot on the gas on the inspection program is what I'm hearing, and get it implemented.
Yeah, we need to be working on it.
Yes, we will.
Okay. You had equipment on here? The packs?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a mandatory, that's a mandatory thing through the, uh, actually, the state and, and federal government, and it, uh, as far as air packs and stuff go.
Yeah, as, as I understand, our air packs are obsolete, expired, parts are, you can't get, uh, they were looking into a grant. They applied for one, they have, but not much luck there, and I did talk to Dev about it here, we do have a fire fund here, a capital fund, where the SCBA packs with mask and spare miles, according to Mike, run about eight to ten thousand, eight thousand to ten thousand each. And so, I think they need about a dozen, but if we could do two or three a year to get started with, and start rotating them out like we wanna talk about, police cars and things like that, we'd like to proceed and at least get started this year.
See, we really haven't allocated too much money to the fire department, 'cause aren't we still making payments on the ladder truck? No, all the trucks are paid for now?
How much is?
See, and then they didn't, they made them payments and they didn't give them any other money.
We, we put the roof on and, uh, yeah, we, we.
Did some interiors work too, didn't you?
Yeah, a lot of that was in-house, self-performed, came right out of the fire department.
How much is in their capital fund, do you know?
Oh, yeah, new furnace, a new air conditioner, I believe it was.
Yeah. Okay.
How much?
She'd have to check the capital fund, the capital funds aren't gonna be in your revenue and expenditure report, so, yeah, I, I, I think, getting them out of rotation schedule is a.
I think everybody concurs, we should go ahead and start rotating out some of these air packs.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll, we'll look into the funds and see, we'll try to make a meaningful impact.
If you need twelve, three would be a good number.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
That would be thirty thousand dollars.
Don't hold me that twelve, it, that number sticks out.
Well.
Well, we can keep applying for those grants every, every cycle too, then.
I thought we'd already done the new police vehicle plan.
Well, we still have, while we're still on fire, we still have to talk about, you know, starting a long-term strategy for their facilities, and.
For the tin shop?
No, no, for the fire department. Fire department, we need to talk about their facility more.
Yeah, so like, do we wanna go down the rabbit hole of fixing up and renovating the site that they're already in? Or begin exploring an alternative location and building?
We can stay where we're at, real cheap.
But, but, but actually, the structure is starting to fall in on top of.
Right, so we need to talk.
Thirty years ago.
So, we need to talk about then staying there and rebuilding there, if that's what you're saying.
Is that the most ideal place?
Well, I mean, I think we really looked, need to look into what we're gonna do as far as fire department period before we.
I, I'm, I think, well, you said it already, we're gonna need a building in the city regardless of this, which I completely agree with, it's the largest populous in, of that proposed fire district. Does the, even if you still have the same equipment that we have now, and we all are working together, do you reinvest in the building we have down there? Or do we look at a complex or a, a different location just for one building? We need to start that, we have to start that planning, 'cause it's not gonna happen in the next fiscal year, but, you know, two or three years from now, it might be happening.
As I understand it, the current real estate we have is not large enough for current regulations of having a big fire truck, you gotta have pull-through area.
Pull-through areas.
And things like that, so I don't even think the site's big enough.
No.
No, they can't back up, so the regulators and the politicians change the rules, so you gotta drive around the building so you can pull through. I'm sorry, Tim, sorry.
No, that's my point.
I, I know, I searched into it, you know, they can't back up, they break mirrors off, um, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative on this. I have no idea where to put a fire department, and what bothers me about it is they're gonna wanna Taj Mahal, just like DPW building. You know, and are we gonna build, you know, that's why I really'd like to kinda pursue this joint fire department building consecutively.
Right.
Together.
But you gotta keep in mind, the other communities aren't gonna invest in real estate inside our community. So, how that would typically work would be, we'd be responsible for the facility, and they would share other expenses.
We're gonna be responsible for buying a ladder truck.
Well, it might be they have the equipment in the building, it might be, who knows?
They don't have a ladder truck, I don't wanna get into that, as far as the finances, I understand where you're coming from, but I mean, consecutive, there's a long ways to go, Patrick, for getting everybody together at the table, because the city Buchanan is gonna be very obstructed in this.
So, you're getting way down the rabbit hole, so let's try to keep this up hi- a little higher level, I appreciate you wanting to be there, but kinda what I'm hearing is, let's start looking at what sites make the most sense.
Possibility of a site, yeah.
And that's what we can leave, we can check that box for a day, and then looking for a new site, and then that'll involve the conversation, I think then it's a deeper conversation of how big and, and what is there? The answers are either we have to redo the site we have, or find a new site, and that's all we need to address today, really.
Right.
And, and start giving direction.
And the site we have is outlandish, useless, you just said that, it should've been gone thirty years ago. And consolidation, consolidation is, is probably what we're gonna look at, I, I mean, and, and I know if those guys were sitting here, man, I'd, I'd get chastised and probably, oh, they would cancel all their votes. But I mean, uh, that's something that we're gonna have to look at eventually, but we still have to keep, maintain occupancy, you know, a building inside the city limits for ISO ratings and stuff like that, so.
I would agree.
And, and like Tim said, any kinda new structure has got regulations, and, and one of them, you know, one of them is the, is the bays that you drive through. So, you know, we're talking big money, but like you said, you're, we're going down a rabbit hole right now, uh, just discussing.
We got lots to talk about.
What we need, and, and that's, that's gonna be one of those things that has to be on the agenda.
And on the flip side of it too, if, let's say we do pick a new site, you know, the fire department building is a, a very interesting real estate investment opportunity with everything else we have going on downtown that gets back on the tax roll, if we did that, don't know.
I don't, I don't, how do we, well, I don't wanna go, I don't, my point being is the DPW site, is there room for a building down there, right next to the DPW building? Could we drive it through, could we put it in the DPW building, it's big enough, ain't it, got drive-through doors?
How about we move the direction to management team, start putting together site options for us?
Yeah.
'Cause I'd like to see the feedback.
We're not even gonna ask, okay?
Yeah, I, I mean, it could be one of them, it very well could be, but let's just, in effort to keep moving, the, the direction for the team is, let's bring some sites to us so we can keep talking about this more in-depth. All right, what do you got next, Mark?
Well, whoever wants to take a topic, I think we've kind of, we beat up the fire department enough.
I think so.
So, really, at this point, whoever wants to.
I think parks seems to be a pretty universal in the downtown, so you wanna do downtown or parks first?
Let's do downtown, I think that's gonna be a little more, parks are gonna be fairly easy, I think.
Yeah, I think downtown.
All right.
Parks will be, just put some equipment in, clean it up, and.
I see digital signs, so you and Larry both had digital signs on there, you know, take the lead there.
Yeah, absolutely. That's all right, bud, I didn't care, no, I, I think that for everybody with the digital signs, I'm sure you guys have heard me say it, that I, I can't get over the cost savings. I don't even care what they cost, not having the guys get up there and take them down and put them up and take them down, and then the traffic problems and the business issues. And then, the plus side of it is, then we've get whoever controls the media from here, now we've got communication opportunities, we've got, now we've got, I, I personally wanna have some kinda music down there, that's just some weird thing I think would be really neat, not with words, 'cause I mean, I'd have to worry about, but I'm just, Christmas time, ho- think about Halloween, and you got Halloween things, and you got spooky music, and I think what, hey, you laugh, but it's gonna be pretty cool when that downtown has a walkable platform we're putting in, and then we're, look it, I want it to be more like Mayberry, all right? So, I think the digital signs, and then from, they never communicate, well, now we can communicate through the signs, we can do the veterans, that, and, and he, he think it's all hocus pocus, but as much as his.
I'm just seeing that it's a wonderful Christmas and Jimmy, oh Jimmy.
There we go, see, exactly, and then come downtown and be Santa Claus, or the Grinch. So.
I'm sorry, Mark.
That's all right, buddy.
Well, the Santa Claus is here, you can be the Grinch.
Oh, that's perfect, actually, that would work out really well.
So, I've seen the signs you guys are talking about, I think they're in CAS, um, they do look pretty good when they did their infrastructure project, we talked, yeah, we, I've seen them. I think they're in a few other places, but I know they're in CAS.
I, I've seen it someplace else, but I didn't see Mark even had it out there, but that was one of them.
They're very, they're very nice and it's a good way for like Norma, who always wants communication, is walking downtown and. Oh, trick or treat hours or Chris, like Christmas and stuff like that, I mean, even notices from like, hey, water boil.
Yeah.
Like getting it out there as soon as possible and you kinda, your taxes are due, it's election day, I need, I mean, we could utilize that for anything.
Concerts, farmers markets, I mean, businesses. Well, we wanna wrap it into when we do the downtown, this isn't something current, it's when we.
So we're gonna pay for this over thirty years?
There's, the project itself is amortized over forty years.
Right.
Well, I mean, that's questions.
Oh yeah, but I, I don't think it's gonna add such a substantial amount, if you think about how much, like if Mike was to calculate how much it costs for his team to do that. That's where I'm gonna pay for it.
Pretty interesting savings.
I just, I just wanted to say on these, um, digital signs, the downtown project is engineered and spacked out. They have these light poles picked out.
Yeah.
Which include the banner poles and the string light fixtures and all that, so. If you guys want the estimate on, or feasibility on can these things be put on our existing.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Light poles, because we're gonna have new light poles everywhere.
Yeah.
Then it, it's, that's an engineering question for Mike Schwartz.
We just call that a change order.
Yeah, that's expensive, and maybe it's not every pole, you know, it might just be some of the poles.
No, it's like every locations.
Maybe we need to just scrap it.
I mean, I'd be interested in learning what the cost is.
Strike that from the record.
I don't mind exploring the cost and seeing how it fits.
Only thing that comes to mind, Dan, and this is my justification, outside of all the fun stuff we talked about, it is simply the time of our staff. And the disruption it causes in town, and we're talking high school signs, re- veteran signs, all of these processes, and then the signs had to be printed. The, 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 where do they get stored, what, all of these issues go away and the digital signs are there for.
Well, there's a word that would fix all of that.
Okay.
No.
Okay, that's fine, not, I mean, sometimes.
I mean, when I, when I was driving truck and seeing these signs around, I thought, are you kidding me, are you kidding me? You know, all that represents is more gloating over some dead hero or your high school student, and I mean, excuse me.
Wow.
But I mean.
Alright, anyway, that, that, that's, you're entitled to your opinion, and I just disagree with you wholeheartedly.
I mean, think about it from a financial point of view. Only from a financial point of view.
Alright.
This is a bunch of mommies sitting together wanting to gloat over daddy or their kitty. And then they go down to city hall and they say, we got this wonderful idea and it's a fundraiser. We're gonna make ten bucks, but it's gonna cost the city fifteen, and the city goes, well, we can't say no, so we'll go ahead and do it. Now, I'm not trying to be nasty, I'm just saying sometimes we just have to say no.
So financially, we could still accomplish that goal and not have to spend fifteen dollars now?
At this point, we're already past that point, we've already made these decisions. And now we're changing our minds midstream because we've seen it somewhere else, and it's gonna cost. It's whatever, Tim, you can answer this, help me.
We don't know the cost.
No, if it, if it's cost prohibitive, look, this isn't set in stone.
Whenever, whenever, whenever that guy comes in there with his tab, like if you're putting electricity in your house. And my son-in-law comes in there and he says, well, I wanted six, but now I want ten. That price doesn't stay at what them six cost.
We're all, we're well aware of this.
I'm not trying to be a smart aleck either, I'm just trying to, you know.
We're just trying to establish, is it worth looking into the cost?
I think that, I think that's agree with you.
You keep going down the deep rabbit hole, we need to stay up here.
Exactly.
Well, I'm not a rabbit, Patrick, I'm not a rabbit, so stop doing that.
No, I mean in a compliment, you wanna get a lot done, but we, we have to stay focused.
I'm not trying to get a lot done, I'm trying to say no.
I hear you.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Want to look into the cost, it's not worth it to you.
I want to concentrate on revenue raising, I don't wanna spend any money, I wanna scratch, I wanna cut, and I wanna raise funds.
Well, today's about what we're spending money on as well as how we're gonna replace money too.
Alright, I haven't seen any money raising yet, that's my.
We did, we just talked about fire inspection and code enforcement program, that's gonna be a revenue generator and it makes the city safer. So I, I, I would disagree with you.
And so, and I, and I disagree with you as well, because I'm trying to save on, yes, I agree that we could eliminate that, but. That's not something that is logical in the respects to how people view those, and your perspective may be that, but that's not the perspective of the rest of the country.
Trying to retrain the thought on twenty twenty hindsight, we really need to get aggressive before we write stuff that's installed. And we've been very bad about saying, let's do this, and then changing a thousand things after the fact.
I don't disagree, interesting way to reduce overtime because city employees are doing it.
And that's, and, and to your point, if we didn't do it at all, we wouldn't have to worry about it, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's my whole point.
I agree, fair, I agree with you on that, however, I don't.
Soon as the school ones went up, you know, the legion, oh boy, and I mean, I knew it was gonna happen.
Right. But the thing is, and, and I, it's sometimes, you just, it's, you don't like the touchy-feely things, you just want to get to the job of doing the city business.
Feely stuff costs money.
I agree, and I don't, but.
Fuzzy rabbits make you feel good, but they don't do nothing, it costs you money.
That's what makes Buchanan Buchanan.
Oh god, Raquel, don't.
See, that's, but that's okay, that's the beauty of having different contrasts, because I get, I get where you're coming from, but. You're not looking at it from a community's perspective, and that's okay.
I think we need to look into cost perspective of this whole thing.
My goodness, who'd have thought this would've been the contentious conversation?
And, and, and just see, just see what it does, uh, as far as the change in our streetscape program.
Even possible.
And then do what?
If it's even possible.
Yeah, it may not, it may not be possible.
Sessions are full.
Yeah, and so, and this is another, we need to move on, because we've only hit about three or four different topics and, and, uh.
Good point.
Thirty plus minutes.
Alright, so downtown, digital signs, let's just explore it and you can come back to us, we can talk about it in the future.
The, I know we talked about it on, on the previous commissions, uh, in regards to access to, to the rear, that is, that's part of that. I wanted to touch on that, like how do we, do we even go down that rabbit hole right now?
Access to the rear.
So when they're tearing up the street, there's no street, there's no access to the front of their building.
Yes, I think that's, um, a great project for Dan and Raquel and that committee we talked about yesterday, as they explore alternative options.
We just let that one sit in there, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's on them and.
Okay.
We'll let you and you two get with Rich on, uh, when you guys wanna start meeting and putting bullets on. When are you gonna get things, when are you gonna start having those conversations with those owners and what that looks like?
Yeah, cause that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big situation in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
So where's that at on this list?
So, that's, I would put that, I would assume that's under, I think this is under Raquel's split number, did you mean that in the downtown traffic plan? For infrastructures, was there more to that topic you wanted to discuss?
Um, I've just had a lot of people ask me like, what. What side's gonna be first, and I know that we talked about this is segment two, but, um. That's one of the things and just like the traffic plan, like when there is no downtown, so.
I think a lot, I get some comments.
So, we, we did a lot of communication like two years ago about this.
Right.
So people. It's not fresh in their minds.
Yep.
So I think we're gonna have to have another communication campaign as soon as we know when some of the pain is gonna start.
Yep.
Um, be proactive and we've talked to Mike Schwartz about this, right now he is talking about March. Being an active, active date of construction, not clear. How much of that is gonna be in the downtown, that goes, that's still uncertain at this point.
Well, and as we've learned, you know, we've got businesses right here that are gonna have an impact in phase one. Um, so last time when we signed boards, we designate Dan and Raquel to start being the commission representation of public interest. With how that infrastructure's gonna impact, so.
You know, one thing we can control is we can communicate.
Yeah.
I mean, we're probably gonna have. Complaints and angry people, that's part of the process, if we communicate proactively.
Well, and the community will help us get to a lot of those pain points sooner, right, because they're gonna bring up thoughts that we may not have had, and if we. Get that communication out, they give them a chance to kinda bitch forward, meaning that they're gonna tell us something, a potential hiccup that we can maybe avoid is. So I'm agreeing with you as well.
There's a lot of ways we can do it, you know, we can do flyers, we can do social media, we could do, uh, you know, a, a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
However, you guys wanna, but I do think there needs to be some. We need to revisit the communication plan because it was so long ago.
I agree, yeah, there's been a lot that happened since then, so.
I'm gonna get with him as far as the addresses, and no, and I'll probably do one-on-ones.
And maybe if you three could get together outside of today and start setting up some planning together.
I wanna talk to them all.
And I think to send with you, Dan, I think to, to give you some information to take with you.
Because they're, they're gonna be mad no matter, so it's, I mean, it's, and, and you can't blame them in some ways, but. I know there's a couple that don't have rear access, so, but we're supposed to have front access during the whole time, right?
To some extent, yeah.
That's what they, no, I, I'm sure they said that they were gonna have front access at all times.
Probably be a day where they have to pour the sidewalk in front of their store that day.
But I mean, there's supposed to be front access.
They'll probably build some kinda construction, like I've seen where they build temporary sidewalks on Niles, they, we, I had to deal with Niles. Cause I had to take my kids to daycare, um, and there were days where they had to shut down specifically for the sidewalk pour. But the rest of the time, they, they laid steel plates or things over, so you had access during the demo phases. Um, and there were alternatives, it's just there are gonna probably be days where. Like the sidewalk pour specifically, where they won't be open because of that.
Alright, so Dan and Raquel, you're gonna get with Rich on getting some times on the calendar and start that planning. What I'm leaving with on that.
Anything else on downtown that we?
Where exactly, this is the digital signs, is that what you're talking about?
No, we're talking about the infrastructure project.
Infrastructure project, yeah.
Number fourteen?
Yeah, number fourteen, well, there, this is kinda, there's duplication throughout this, so.
So we've only covered one thing, we need to.
No, we're, we're moving better than that, I got a bunch of checkmarks.
I'm going down a rabbit hole, he's going down a gopher hole, we need to get it.
Okay, so that's, so anything else on downtown that we wanna discuss if we're gonna, so that we can close that one out? Cause we already know there's gonna be a lot more in the future from, from Raquel and.
Oh yeah, I was just saying, look.
We really don't have any more direction until we start getting into.
Yeah, no, I think that we, that went perfectly, I feel like.
So, let's move on to parks, I think that one will be pretty simple, I know Catherine Park has been, that's a good, that's gotta be the next one in my opinion, that has to be. The next focus, it's the one that the community, when we did, uh, surveys, that was the number one one they wanted fixed, we've, we've taken care of the north side, I think it looks amazing. And so I think we put all of our, our, I mean, I've already got the company set up, I just gotta revisit with them on cost and get a new quote, cause of course I'm sure prices have changed. And to get, you know, and maybe a new rendering, things like that, I'll talk to AAA State of Play on that one. Uh, but what we do need to talk about is, uh, some, what kinda ground covering are we gonna put down? You know, that's something that, I don't know if it's regulated by the state, I'm sure there's some kinda safety code that, that you've gotta have a certain amount of inches of, of product. So I wanna just make us aware that that's an additional cost that we hadn't factored into the first time we were gonna go out.
Yards gotta put that pebble down.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that little, that rock.
Before I even, I wanna make stinking sure that all the old equipment is saved and is given to the baseball. Northside don't want it, cause they don't want handouts.
Right.
We'll give it to the baseball association.
There might not be anything torn out, cause everything's been torn out of that park, as there's a set of swings and an old slide.
That's still, there's, there's stuff.
They might stay.
Well, and I'll send you what I got, what I worked on last time and all of the equipment, I have it, they even rendered it where it would be set up, how it would all fit, and it looked really nice.
That was all brand new equipment out there and it was all about planning.
We've been putting money in a capital fund for the parks, um, we did take a nice chunk out of it, out for victory. Uh, I believe Mr. Busby as an example thinks there may be some additional funding, he can help fundraise to offset some of that equipment.
How much blowback are we gonna get from the north side that we don't buy them playground equipment first?
Well, I think they're actively working, they're working on a grant with Rich.
We have a grant, uh, submitted to the state for playground equipment.
And they're, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
By the way, um, it's pretty certain that we're gonna get the boat launch grant.
Is it?
So we need to plan for matching boats.
Dan, in answer to that, I, Northside's aware that we're, the next focus is Catherine Park, and they've come up to us and ex- and expressed that through Busby, that he's taking care of that.
And Genie's on the barb too, um, it's in their master plan, I believe as well, so like, that's a really an accomplishment.
Said that too, she said Catherine Park was next, from a barb perspective.
So in my mind, you know, we were planning to spend sixty to seventy thousand dollars on that part a year ago, um.
Yeah, you can add twenty-five percent of that.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, let's, let's work within a hundred grand and see what we can accomplish and.
I'll reach out to AAA State of Play and get some updated figures on that.
Volunteers did, volunteers did the school playgrounds.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity there as well.
There was two options on that as well, and I got a quote for both, one for installation, one for us to do it, and they, basically, we would just have to get it off their flatbed. And then Mike and his team could put it together, so there's, there's two options.
Usually you have an overseer and advisor that hangs around.
Yep, and so we, we went down that whole thing, actually, we were right at the, when you came to us the first time, Tim, we were right on the cusp of doing it.
Yeah.
And then we backed up because I.
The current ground cover.
Yeah, ground cover through us and we weren't budgeted for that.
Companies like AP or, that's a big deal for them to go out with their equipment and help do project, like days of service for things like that.
Ravish Park.
Yeah, there you go.
What's the school principal from Stark School forever, she's been around seven years.
Carla.
Oh, Carla Hall. Yeah, you're right.
And, and, and you always bring this up, but the marijuana companies are required to have some kinda day of service too, so there's an opportunity to spread.
Well, you, you know, everyone wants to ask, but we're at Stark.
But they have to do it, so we can just say, hey, this is your opportunity.
Just say Red Bud Roots gets ahold of me on occasion to do.
Yeah, so we got options for funding, I think, um.
Rich, you said that we're getting that grant? Possibility, start.
Very high on the boat launch.
Okay, where was the eighty thousand dollars, you raised eighty thousand dollars for a different grant?
Kayak, that starts construction in March.
So that's a different one, so we need to raise the money for this boat launch.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Are you looking for grants or doing what you were doing for the?
Yeah, but I'm not committing to guarantee I'm gonna have eighty grand.
Oh, I didn't ask, that's not what I asked, but I mean.
Did that before.
And the boat launch.
A little stressful.
The thing about it is though, is if you don't get it for that specifically, if we get this, Rich, you're, you're looking at a ground where we have never asked for money. The city of Buchanan has never, ever asked for money. If we get this starting going repetitively, you know, and we can show what we're doing, I would really like. You know, a repetitive thing as far as barb, and I mean, I was going that direction, but I couldn't stay on the committee. Because I'm too mean and ornery, because they weren't moving fast enough, but I want that to be repetitive.
I think that's where we're at, I think that's the beauty of what he's doing currently, is we've started to get a cadence within the, the grant, this, like.
For sure.
Spectrum that we are being awarded because we're getting so concrete and good at.
And we're checking boxes, moving ball.
To Dan's point, if we can build this culture of budgeting match money.
Right.
Then it becomes, every match dollar becomes ten dollars.
Exactly, exactly. And don't let nobody tell you the marijuana's going nowhere, cause they're not, you know, they're not going nowhere.
And I think boat launch was planned for the next fiscal year budget anyways, we're talking primarily. Most of these things we've talked about today have been remaining this fiscal year, or a good chunk of them, so.
We're good, so everybody's good on Catherine Park, I'll circle back on that one for equipment and get updated quotes, and then supply those to Tim.
On the team is, uh. Kind of the internal lead on park stuff, is it Emma?
Emma, Emma goes to barb every month.
Okay.
She goes and reports back, and there's.
Actually, I'll have to kick her back through the bar.
I think Tim was working with Emma.
Yep, I'll get it over to Jake.
Yeah, we're, we're looking to get some equipment for Ravish Park.
On Raquel.
They had a couple damage units up there.
Okay.
And so we, I thought we ordered a little bit of equipment up there, but I don't know if it was an invoice or a receipt.
Ravish was like.
But we're working on it, yeah.
I think we had that after Catherine next too, so.
I like that.
Alright, well, let's get engaged with the barb.
I was just saying.
You get, you get to be the, the one, the liaison with Emma and help for us. So we also in the park sector, we have a couple, uh, other topics related to the pickleball and disc golf projects. Both those look like they'd be Centennial Park, who wants to start with that one?
Um, I've been talking with some people that I know that play disc golf, um, and I know that. We have some volunteers that would be willing to, um, pour the concrete if we were to do that over the turf, which I think that. I kinda looked into it a little bit, I think in long term, over the course of having the disc golf, I think it'd be smarter to do the concrete. Instead of the turf, because you have to come back and it's more of a, um. You have to maintain it more and pour sand, that kinda thing, and I've also talked with Patrick about this. Um. But there was another person that was talking about maybe even donating the money for the labor. There was another person that was talking about maybe even donating the money for the labor, so. I feel like we got a pretty good start on that, and I'm looking forward to getting this project done as soon as possible. I know that. I forget who I talked to, they, oh wait, no, I think Rich said in one of the meetings or something, I don't really remember. Um, about, we would need the grant kinda done by April. Was that you?
I think, yeah, I think Rich has some stuff on his radar that might help with that.
Yeah, I mean, for any of these locations, the first, gotta have consensus on location. Then you gotta put a little bit of engineering behind it to get a good cost estimate, and you gotta find a funding source.
Yeah.
So, how much does pickleball court cost these days? You know, we need to probably figure that out pretty quick.
Well, so like, the disc golf one, I, so everybody's on the same page with Raquel there. I shot her. Marketized notes from like a year ago, and we kinda started going down the the cost estimating on this, so. And we had like Mr. Mr. D, who's that teacher, Anthony, the guy that came present to us that day.
Yeah.
And then we met with um somebody from Niles about their park.
Yeah.
Who, I don't remember who that was, and walked that Centennial Park area and. Put some estimates together, you know, just on our own, and then it died on the vine.
Right.
So, I was talking to Raquel and I said, hey, this would be an awesome project to start working with Barb on, cause it should start there. And, you know, build, build a a plan, and get some estimates, and then see how you guys can keep moving that ball forward.
And we definitely wanna do the the concrete. My understanding from the previous discussions is that's, then that allows you to have tournaments, officially sanctioned tournaments. And now with these kids getting sponsorships and doing that for a living, um, there's no question that definitely, if we're gonna do it, the the concrete.
And those notes were old, but I mean, you could get it done, I think, you know, a whole, a whole eighteen hole court for like. Maybe even as low as thirty grand, and 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 maybe most of that you can cover in donations and fundraising and things like that, so.
And then, just for everybody's reference, I had mentioned to Raquel, is I thought it would be interesting that when they do the engineering, Rich, is that if they could do it. Uh, an eighteen hole course, but then have it go in reverse, so you actually have two courses in one, and you have golf courses that started doing this, where eighteen and hole one are the same. It just depends on what day it is and they go backwards on the other days. And I think it just from a marketability position and that that you get. I mean, a really unique functionality from a pickleball, I mean, a disc golf course, uh, with really. Only additional expense would be the concrete pads at the end of, you know, but just floating it out there.
So then the pickleball stuff.
Yep.
After Randy, um, Bickerd was down here, and we had those discussions, I reached out to Trish, you know, at the high school and said, hey, what's your plan? For those tennis courts that you plan to remove? Maybe there's an opportunity where we could work and partner with the school on. Doing tennis courts and pickleball courts all, you know, where the lines are on the same surface.
Oh, the, the most important part of that was though, she said that she had some kinda funding.
Yeah, they believe they already have a a grant for fifty percent of that cost.
Which is super exciting.
And they wanted to get a, they wanted to get a, a committee established quickly on that.
So they're actually gonna talk about putting pickle parks in the tennis court?
Yeah, so what, so where this.
Where they're at today.
So what we had talked about is, at Centennial Park, I was walking past there one day, and I saw the amount of space, and I thought, okay, let's find out if Trish even wants new ones, she does. We want pickleball, okay, great. What about down there? It's out of the way, there's home, there are very few homes, if at all, cause that's one of the complaints, is the s- the sound. The hundred percent is the number one complaint, but what that allows us to do is to get pickleball courts for half the cost, they get new tennis courts. And then, um, I don't, well, both people are happy, I mean, the kids need new tennis courts and we want pickleball. I mean, the communities want pickleball, that's the standing.
Ravish Park is not.
I think it's because of the sound, because they would, cause this, the apartments are so close, and that echoing, and that, and the homes on the other side of that.
I'm fine with Ravish, but.
Centennial Park floods.
Yeah, that is.
Never, I've never seen a flood in my lifetime.
Well, since they fixed, what, since uh the Greens fixed that, the Mill Race, they fixed.
It's not, it's, I've never seen a flood in my li- I used to practice and play soccer and everything.
Still in the floodplain.
That is a good point, it's valid.
Cause that ballpark, they've never, stupid spam, um. That baseball court, or that baseball field is where the dog park should have been, but they didn't put it in there, cause it's so wet.
Now you're talking, you're, that's in the back, we're talking like where the playground equipment is at that area.
I mean, that's still, I mean, I'm just raising that.
It is in the floodplain, you're right, but I've never seen a flood.
Would you put it, would you put it, I mean, this is preliminary.
Mm-hmm.
Would you put it right behind the swing sets there?
I don't know.
No, so what I was thinking is closer to the street, may have to move that equipment, not get rid of it, but move it, and then that whole section becomes for.
Right in front of the parking lot.
Yeah, right, right next to it.
Maybe you lose some of the parking lot?
If you have the football field behind you, that section right there.
Exactly, I know what you're talking about.
But if we could cut our.
It wouldn't be, it'd be on the, so that, I mean, we're, it doesn't really matter, but the snow hill, you don't wanna interrupt the snow hill.
Correct, no, no, they think they use that too much for different events, they, the police use it during the school.
Well, the kids use it in the winter for school.
Just says, it's a sliding hill.
I mean, I want a thrill down there.
Running hill for the football team.
Okay, that's fine, but then.
So essentially, right, right here.
You got somebody to work with, I mean, at one time, they really wanted to put a professional pickleball court.
I, Randy Bickerd.
Yeah, and I think that's where we get Randy involved.
Not Randy, or not Pickle, but the.
No, so that's why we were just talking disc golf, you got all that land on the other side of the tree.
They wanted to start right there with hole one.
So the nice part about disc golf is, it's pretty easy to be moved around and.
But we really need to collaborate with somebody who knows what the hell they're doing, because it can be a professional field.
And that's what we want.
Boatload of them in the state.
So another, again, for this meeting's purpose, right, like, great opportunity for Barb to to focus on those projects. As priority projects and start getting a plan and between costs and fundraising and bring it back to us, so we can take action. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
We're checking a lot of stuff off now. Checking a lot of stuff.
Alright, what are.
Let's do Live Buchanan.
Alright, um.
I can just, no, let's do DDA before we even concentrate.
Well, so you must not have read the email, DDA, wha- what are we thinking? During March, December is when the county's coming to talk to us sometime, hopefully?
Yeah, cause there's nearly.
I talked to Andrew Hahn at Cornerstone the y- yesterday, you know, Rich and, Rich is having conversations with him too, so.
Right, this is something for DDA to do though, it's not our headache.
DDA doesn't even exist, and we don't even know if we're gonna do it yet. I mean, I'm supportive of it.
Do a DDA.
We agreed to explore it, I'm, I think we're all in favor of it, but we don't know timing or cost or anything of that, and we still have to deal with.
Yeah, until they exist, I don't disagree with going down that road of what they're gonna be responsible for, but we're not even at that point yet. And I don't think we will be for any time in the current.
Yeah, so I threw this on here just as an awareness piece, because um, Live Buchanan's been in negotiations with the Southwest Regional. Chamber, um, and they're looking to come do a presentation to us at their, our next meeting, um, for a proposal. For us to be able to continue moving forward on our main street objectives, um, a funding plan, a budget, um. Accountability and structure. So, it really, I threw it on there more as an awareness item for the group on that, as a heads up. For our next meeting. And they anticipate, I don't know how yet, but they do anticipate working closely and cohesively. Alongside a DDA in their strategy.
W- would, would the common council, when that's established, would that be, that would be tied in with?
Uh.
DDA or no?
No, they would, I, I think they would be working closely with. The DDA, cause a lot of their, you know, a lot of that stuff historically was funded by a DDA.
The DDA did, the DDA did it all.
Yeah, these are all questions that, once we start exploring how a DDA will operate in the future of Buchanan, we need to talk about.
Quite a few people on that common committee that, when they officially assigned, they're, were on the DDA, they were part of that, so.
Yeah, from, well, what we set in on.
But that's a, that's a good segue, I would say, into the common investment, um. So, the com- that common committee, you know, so when Sean was here, right, we, the commission said. We want these boards to consolidate into each other and have one board of governance, the co- what would be called the, the common committee.
Oh.
That group met.
It should be called the DDA, and I'm sorry, I'm, you can do that.
Dwelling on the DDA, cause we, we're going to get answers on the DDA.
No, you're not, you, you know, we, wait a minute, just wait a minute. Live Buchanan stand alone is a waste of time and money and energy. It's period, and I know all of you guys wanna say it's not, but it is. Without the DDA, your main street was structurally. Screwed from the very beginning. Nobody likes that opinion, because nobody wants to see what it was. It was created because the DDA was disbanded.
Yeah.
And then it was let to run its own route.
We've had these conversations with the group already, we've all agreed to have Rich move forward with exploring the DDA. And the cost structure and the timing that all goes with that, he's done that, we're expecting to meet on that in December.
So, I mean, my whole point is, is don't waste any time on anything else till we see what we're doing with DDA.
Right.
Cause all of this falls under the DDA.
That, that's an option. It was more an awareness item. We still have to keep moving forward, because when they come to us, they may tell us. It's gonna take you two years to stand up a DDA, and it's not gonna be financially feasible to do anything for five years within a DDA. And they need to do X, Y, and Z from a strategy standpoint, it's not gonna be turn the DDA on and hand them a bunch of money and they'll be able to do things. Like, that's like a very drawn out, long-term conversation, and we have immediate needs to be, that have, to have action taken on before that. So the common committee, back to that, um, that group met, had their initial meeting, they are uh meeting again this month. To hopefully hammer out their bylaws and their organizational structure, to bring back to us to, to review and hopefully approve. Um, so there's things in the common though, that came up from that first meeting, um, that are, you know, upgrades to that site that. They'll be talking to us about proposing budget items for, um, those being like the roofs on the tin shop in the common. And you look at the tin shop building right now, the roof is like this, it's just, it's wavy. Um, the farmer's market actually brought up lights to us, and you know, how it's usually really dark and, you know, not safe in some of that space.
Rich, you got a question? I just wanna bring up a point, I think, on the common committee, I mean, the common is our jewel, right?
Mm-hmm.
If we're gonna invest somewhere, that's our rate of return, big time, right? I know there's certain things we gotta do now, but it, you know, if we're looking at long-term investment.
Mm-hmm.
We need a master plan.
Yeah.
Because that's how you get grant money, is we're seeing with the Riverfront.
Yep.
When you have a whole master plan, they fund projects consecutively.
Yeah, and I think.
You're thinking about the big picture, and how everything works together. It wouldn't be that difficult, I mean, we have a lot of the bones from Andrews.
Yeah.
Uh, to do a, a visually driven master plan, talking about, you know, concert upgrades. Shade, trees, walking paths, public art, whatever you, whatever you envision there, but. Uh, I think that would be a good investment, uh, to bring in millions of dollars potentially over a decade for the common.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, create a master plan and work with that common committee, hopefully we're gonna be forming that before the end of this year. And you guys can hit the ground running on, on that, get us, get us those dollars. I have, I don't have anything else to add, I think that's a great strategy.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear, um, so those other groups that we postponed, are you, so you're planning on combining all of them and making them committees, just so if I can have a resolution made up for it?
That is the direction I'm expecting us to go down. I, I think, cause like Farmer's Market, we already delegated down.
Yeah, they're, they're just a committee, so they don't have to abide by Open Meetings Act, but so you're talking about One Buchanan, uh, Buchanan Area Fine Arts and the Common Committee.
Yeah, all one report underneath.
Under, and they'll become committees and.
Of that.
Okay, just so I have a resolution for you guys.
One Buchanan now, is that, that's another, that was something that was recognized?
That's a tough one, right?
Well, is it? Because we really, all we did was recognize it for political reasons.
Right.
You know, and that's to be basically what it is, politics have changed now.
It would be nice to get, have them come to our.
There's nothing stop, the thing about it is, Patrick, we don't need to be involved in that. If they wanna do something like that, they can do it up there at the senior center all they want.
Yep.
I went to one of their meetings and I told them fundamentally, I disagree, and I don't disagree because of blacks or queers or gays. You know, excuse my straightforwardness, you know.
Don't put that in there.
Well, you know, it came out, it's the drugs, the gays. But, and everybody, you know, freedom of speech, everybody gets freaky about freedom of speech. My point being, some of my best friends are gay. The point being is, I don't want it shoved down my throat, and I don't wanna do special things for them, because everybody needs. You know, affirmative action, and that's what it was. So we don't really need to be associated with that.
Saying you don't, you wanna downgrade them off of an official city board, is that what you're saying?
I would, I don't, I don't have a problem.
You know.
I, I mean, I would just like to hear from them what, what they've done since they've been made a city board, and if it makes sense for them to operate under. The rules and regulation of having that designation, or if they, would, if it's just better for all of us to make them committee grade, so they don't have to follow OMA. I don't even know if they're following OMA right now. That's something we probably need to.
Well, there's some pretty serious people on that committee, you know, I mean, there's a real strong group of people.
Before it wasn't, but now that Ruth is involved, she's.
Right, Ruth's been out of quite a while.
Actually, a good point in, in Larry's comments, right, he's got, he made a comment about reports and committees, like, we. What, what did you mean by that? Cause I, I think I know what you mean, but.
I think we, I think we have it, I think we have a few committees, and uh, they, they are uh. Responsible to the city, they wor- they basically work under the city umbrella, and uh, I, I just uh think that. There should be reporting.
Yeah.
Now, we heard, uh, when we were at the common council, we heard that some of these committees, and, and I'll be s- specific on one. I, you know, the farmer's market, uh. We don't actually know what's going on with the farmer's market. We know we, we pay, we pay out, but what are we bringing in?
Well, and they have.
And, and there's no report, and, and yes, when I, when we sit in on a common council, they talked about, you know, putting them under, on, under. That umbrella instead of our umbrella, as such.
They did tell us, though, they do send everything here, they do their reporting, because Fran and.
Yeah, yeah, we were told that, you're right, we were told, then, have you ever heard anything? Because our city clerk is looking like. Uh, she got the deer in headlights one.
Right.
Really?
She's got the best.
And so is our.
You guys don't receive any kinda budgetary information from them, the comings and goings of their.
But we pay out four thousand dollars.
I received the, like, um, the waivers every year.
Okay.
Um, at the end of the year, and I store them in the cabinet.
So I mean, these, so these groups are the, are official boards, need to be sending us the stuff there, we need it in our packet monthly. If they're meeting, they're required, you know, whenever, or whenever they're required to, I guess, not all of them are.
Right, some of them are.
So we can be cognizant of what's going on, and they should at least be coming and talking to us a minimum once a year on an annual update to us, and.
Well, I do.
What are the standards for these boards?
Actually, since you said once a year, we should do this at the beginning of their year and at the end of their year. Because their, their year starts in May and it ends in September.
I think that's a great idea.
A beginning, and they can give us an end. They reported to the DDA, you know, and I hate bringing this back up.
Other, there's other board, we're, I'm, we're talking about all boards that are official.
Nobody is reported, I mean, Dale Dorn used to report the landfill, and he did it awfully, but, you know, the Barb, I mean, we just don't. We're not being informed from the minutes, we're not being contacted, it's not, and that's our fault.
Right.
Yeah, that is our fault.
We don't even know if they're, they're conducting any kind of uh, 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 meeting, and, and I have a problem with that, and like I said, I, well, this. There was a couple of us that were in that meeting, and, and they made it quite clear that they turn in a report every year, they've been doing it for years.
Yeah.
And I'm going, okay, that's fine, but like I said.
They're technically not, yes, they're, they're under the city, but they do not have to abide by Open Meetings Act, so, because they're a committee, they were downgraded.
Right.
So, and that's what I'm hoping that this is going to do, because then you just have one group meeting.
Yes.
With all of these boards, there are subcommittees like you do on landfill, where you guys meet separately, but you don't have to abide by Open Meetings Act. We don't have to do minutes and agendas for just like a quick meeting.
Yes.
Like Barb is a different story, you gotta have them, but these other subgroups that I, I don't know, and here's what I'm gonna tell you, I am not gonna be your babysitter and track you down.
Right.
Because I have too much to do, and if you can't do that, then it's on you, and it's gonna be on the group.
Yeah, but it should be on the group.
It's on the group.
It should be.
Yeah, I'm not gonna track you down and try and figure out what meeting.
I think the common committee's gonna solve it.
Council, you know, with a little bit of guidance or directions from, you know, some above. Common council, you know, with a little bit of guidance or directions from, you know, some of us, you know. To nudge them that way, maybe we could get that.
I'm talking about the boards that we sit on specifically.
Well, yeah.
Cause if they're a recognized board, we sit on it, so it should be us internally. You know, let's use Raquel as an example, cause she's easy to pick on. She's a new one. You're at Barb, right? We don't get any kind of communication right now, really on what Barb's doing on a regular basis, even though they're meeting monthly. So, make sure we get something in our packet once a month. Just like me, I could easily put the landfill packet in ours and like, that's just me forwarding it in onto you to, I, I can do that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great if you guys were like, okay, hey, we, even if it's quarterly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And say, hey, this is what we've done, write up a little half sheet, we'll throw it in the packet, I'll put you on the agenda and say, we're gonna give an update.
Yeah.
And then you guys kinda all know what's going on at whatever board you're on.
Yeah.
Now, with the common collective, are one of you wanting to be on that board?
I, I think we need to have somebody on that.
Somebody on that.
Who you got?
I was gonna put Mark on it, was the suggestion.
No, I know. The thing is though, you can't go beat the heads of the body. The thing is, that board would no longer exist. That's my fear.
So the whole thing was the resolution for this to not disband, but make them subcommittees of the common collective. So that you guys can actually proceed if that's the way.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we wanna know what type of, you know, if they're like Barb's got a five-year plan. How are we, what are they accomplishing in this phase of their five-year plan this year?
Yeah.
You know, how do we stay in front of that? How are we budgeting for that?
The thing about it is, is sitting here talking about it is great, Patrick. We have to enforce it.
I agree.
And it's tough to enforce it.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Everybody hates me, because when I go to these meetings and you see the bogus garbage that's been going on, nobody wants to teach anybody.
Well, here's another one, like planning commission, right? They've canceled a couple of meetings recently. What are we talking about strat? You're on that one now, right? If we're not having a meeting to address, I hope you can be cordial enough to maintain on it. Let's just go ahead. But like, they should, we have planning initiatives that if we're not addressing immediate needs in the community. For new buildings or whatever, planning commission needs to address. And then what do, we need to be talking, what are we doing strategically within that board versus just canceling a meeting?
First thing is not to cancel any of the meetings that you do, because we have one a month.
So, but what's, it's just about being more effective with our boards and tho- those boards are reporting accordingly.
Okay.
And I think, I think the common council is under a, a good guidance. Uh, with, with some of the people they got on board.
Yeah, that room was full of uh.
Randy, uh, you know, throw a mark on there and, and so. It could be headed in the right direction and some of this stuff can be taken care of. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna swing back because uh. This one just came to me, you know, it's that whole dog park thing up there too. I mean, that's just.
You had to go there.
A, a dog dumping ground as far as I'm concerned, and we maintain it. There's something that could be useful.
Thank you, Carla Cole. Thank you, Pat Moore.
Other than what it is.
It gets used a lot.
That's something that we need to look at, uh, down the road. It doesn't need to be done now.
It should be brought up at Barb.
I agree.
It should be brought up at Barb.
Barb initiative, I agree.
They planted ten trees in there to make damn sure it didn't get changed. And I don't care and I will scream it from the tops of the roofs, because they screwed around. I gotta be careful. Settle me down.
Alright, settle down, settle down.
It's a dog park and you don't have your oxygen.
Yeah, the dog park set me off.
Alright, alright, so boards, we do have another board on the list, um, Brownfield. Oh, did you have more? Did you have more?
No, no, that, that, that's good.
So Brownfield board.
What about roofs for the tin shop and all that? You wanna?
I, it was really more on here as a, an awareness item.
For the common?
We should be planning to budget for that, but that common group is probably gonna, those are things that came up in that meeting.
Okay.
Is all, as like, hey, these are areas that we will have to start putting money into in the not-too-distant future. Not, not necessarily items that need to be done this.
I have a suggestion. How about we take a break?
Yeah.
Some fresh coffee.
Oh, goodie.
And then we'll come back and refocus.
I like it.
I, I would, uh, I would bring this up to the mayor. Uh, I know Raquel still has to work. So if sh- if this is running into your work hours, uh, I think she could be excused and then caught up later. You so choose.
If you're having so much fun, you'd wanna stay.
I, I wanna stay.
I mean, that's up to you, but I think I, I just wanted to give you.
I like.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Trust me, when I went to the same office every day, I would rather come here. I know how she feels, cause when you go to the same place every day, you're not like.
If you're on salary or you're uh, hourly, you know, salary and hourly are different, different things.
That's true.
No, I get it.
Your attendance is up to you.
That's what we're trying to say.
This matters to me.
Well, then that's, that's all it matters to.
We're, we've accomplished.
Yeah, we have. Look, look at all the.
So did Barb put that there?
Well, I don't know if it was Barb.
My throwdown was a real slap.
Cause it was before I.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's been a while.
You're on recording.
Yeah. Cause I've been out here six years and it was before that.
It's a, it's a biggest.
It's the same reason that we ended up with forty ducks down there at one point, because they call it the duck park.
Genuine.
But you know it's true. It's just another area of contention because people got away with it. And people started dumping their ducks down there. They weren't even regular ducks. And people thought it was cute. Well, then I had, I had ducks getting hit in the road. I had ducks.
Feeling any better today? You look better today than you did last.
Every day is better.
You got more color today. You didn't have a lot of color last night.
And the thing about it is, is talking loses a lot.
Yeah.
It took us a while and we caught a lot of heat.
Used to be able to sit still and stay saturated. Now I gotta be on oxygen. This one's not working.
Well, why don't you put it back on? Cause you're talking a lot, so.
Well, I did put it on ten.
That's also back when we were not.
I'm not blue, am I?
No, you, you have a lot more color today than last night. Last night I was a little worried.
For us to have a balanced budget.
I was dead.
Yeah, you, you were very white.
On the, on the, on the thirtieth, I was dead.
Thinking that it was on the other side of McCoy Creek, like across the bridge.
What's like a.
No, cause it's just a work session.
Alright, so if we were to look at, so here's, that's a, that's a private property, but this is the.
Yeah, you should hear the way them guys talk. They make, they embarrass me.
Oh, no, that's. But we're gonna talk to him, maybe he might be willing to do something.
When they, when that lung pops, when that lung deflated.
Yeah.
Uh, this is ours.
Reinflated, I got a ten cc air balloon right there.
Okay, that's his son's.
I'm still coughing up blood.
So.
Oh, shoot.
I'm happy to see those.
You're right, they were originally talking about coming through here, cause there's. So talking about coming through like this or this way. Well, we get, we get one back here through the woods, cause I know when they have the woods, it adds that difficulty.
Maybe not as in-depth as this.
So. Everything's gonna be on this side.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, but I think at one point, somebody had brought an idea, maybe having something here that comes across the water.
Make a huge list today, skip a three hour.
The water alone.
That's not, no, 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 no.
It's a no frills type thing.
Something different than what. Okay, and I think that's great. That's why I was excited that you were so excited about it. So, cause what I'm thinking is, I bring this to Barb. Is I wanna, if, if this is not in the floodplain, and we can, to his point, find that out. I have, I have a floodplain, uh, documents, I'm gonna pull them up. So the new, the forest, tennis courts go here. And then we would just move this playground equipment. And I, I'm suggesting.
Yeah, well, there won't be none now.
People work at. Uh, but that'll work out perfect, cause then we can make this a central point for this golf course to maybe some sort of building. Right, some sort of, uh, like, at one point, somebody even talked about, there's like a building with. Stuff for sale. Discs for sale. Well, actually, my friend Sports Forty Four, they have a, a sponsorship with the disc golf product, so I might even tell them that potentially. But yeah, so that's where I think everybody has some vision. This area, cause these baseball fields aren't used, are softball fields.
I still need to talk to Matt about this.
Yeah, for his son's property. Yeah, yes, that's it. You do. So if we can get him to allow us to come through here. With no other reason than just for disc golf, like I don't have any other plans, and that would be perfect, cause then we could run it all the way down the trail. You know? So is that what you envisioned?
Yeah, I, I was so confused about like what size of ground, cause it kept on, I mean, hearing about that. But, they're the ones that keep me. You said something about the.
For what part?
Maybe, I don't know, it's just, I remember saying, don't be afraid, because the parking lot is where it is today, that it always has to be there. Like the parking lot in the pavilion, like, in, in the grand strategy, things may have to go away or be moved, and that's okay.
Yeah, they could, this whole area can be restructured and I think that's a, there's a point of reference. I think we actually make this a central point for this golf and pickleball conversation is like, uh. As far as like centralized location for information, like I have a flag, which shows where the course goes and then. You know, I just, I think there's a lot of.
There's a lot of stuff in that info, but hopefully you can really lean into it and get some. Some fast answer. I mean, when, even on that website, it said it's like four hundred dollars a hole to actually have an engineer. By a professional company.
When I hit it into.
Well worth the spend.
When I hit it into chat, chat said between twenty and fifty K, so whoever said that was like spot on. And it's a hundred thousand for like the high professionals. So I think if we, if our budget line says it's like around thirty to fifty K, twenty to whatever.
Low hanging fruit, we could fundraise for stuff like that.
I think that it would be great, like especially if we had tournaments or travel teams, so we could make some money.
The school may be willing to help maintain things, and we're already spending money to maintain all that now.
Right, no, there's, there's, there's two, two up and coming sports that are going, and we're gonna hit both of them right at the same time, disc golf and pickleball.
So we're like, we're trying to get it in that area of both of them.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, yep, that's, that's, because it's the, it makes the most sense. Because you're centralizing sports activities and you have access to the waters right there, the complex. Uh, it's unused space, we're already picking boards to city, so let's put something in there to generate activity, you know?
There is.
And the school gets in with it too, and they may even have a, they may have a pickleball team. They may even end up with a disco. I mean, I'm sure they're out there.
Yeah.
General fund, is that what you're talking about?
My idea, I think it's Patrick, um, and like, if the softball field's, if we didn't have any time for disc golf or pickleball right there. Put those. And we could back it up with some mass projects.
Would it really help us?
They did, and they really have fallen off because.
We get recapped.
I don't know if they. There's a reason that the softball team come along. Right here, there's no, there's no lights on. Do you know why they, you know, because they don't host, they don't do any playing out there. Softball's not portion of what he saw.
Softball's died off.
It's died off, like, Plumb Park, you remember, Plumb Park is. Amazing, even the eighties and nineties, it was, it doesn't, nobody does softball. Not at that level anymore, so that's, I'm not trying to dissuade you from it, but I'm telling, when you said disc golf, everybody wants it.
Yeah.
Pickleball, I mean, look at Mark, did you wanna look at Plumb Park? Oh, my gosh. That is a beautiful pickleball court that we've seen. But that's where the business, so I think we have an opportunity to utilize that space. Yeah, you guys ready?
Let's get going.
Yeah, another board that Dan's gonna be on. I mean, if you say we never gave you anything, we gave you anything you wanted at this point, certainly, not everything, but enough that we can make you happy for a while. Alright, Rich, you wanna give us a rundown on Brownfield?
Yeah, the Brownfield, um, we. Our best path for, although now that you've talked to Andrew Hahn. Is to use the county's Brown, Brownfield. That's what I, I had the discussion with Dan, Dan. The county's Brownfield is already set up. We do have a Brownfield committee ordinance that we could technically revive our Brownfield committee in Buchanan. It adds another committee, another layer, another, uh. Piece of government, if you will, um, so. If we're going to go the DDA route and align eventually with, through the county. Why don't we go the Brownfield route with the county as well? That's, that was my thought, uh. There's other ways we can do it. I think we have to have stra- strategic discussions. And I mean, we have a new city manager coming on too. We probably want them to be part of these discussions as well, um. But I just need like marching orders, like what's the final call?
Um, how about we do this, since you're already talking with Dan, Fede, maybe. Dan, myself, you and, and Dan, just get a meeting on the calendar, and we can sit down and. And understand it as a group and Dan and I can bring it back to the commission with you and. Give, ask everybody for, if they wanna fall in line with the direction that the four of us come up with, or something like that. How about that?
Yeah, I, I think there's value and I, I think I've shared before, I feel good about our relationship with Dan Fede. He knows, he's probably the most knowledgeable Bering County, uh, official on these types of programs. He is, he's willing to help us. And is there a value in a relationship building with these, these items with him? And knocking them out through the, on the county platform, so I think we should have that discussion. But I need consensus from everyone that this is the direction to go.
Is everybody good with Dan and I meeting with Rich and Fede? Mm-hmm. And we can start working on plan?
I don't really wanna create another committee. I'm in full agreement on you, cause all that's gonna do is delay everything.
Right.
You know, I mean, and it's been dead in the water since Mark's left.
Alright.
We have, one of the big things about Brownfield too is we have three Brownfields.
Mm-hmm.
And we have to add, do an analysis of where they are in their lifespan. If they're completed and if there's money in these accounts, what can they be used for?
Right, I think that's important. Okay.
Yeah, do, what do we have? Do we have three in the city, do you know?
Yes.
Where exactly are they located?
One's right here, Smith, uh.
He's talking about the gym.
And, um, River Street.
Yeah, and, and, and Feed Milk could potentially be designated as one, just haven't been.
Which one, Patrick?
The Feed Milk site.
Well.
But I mean, there's, there's significant amount of funds in these accounts that was captured from Brownfield.
Yeah.
So, what can we use it for? We need, we probably need a little bit of legal advice. To understand where our Brownfields, like the lifespan, are they complete?
Mm-hmm.
If there's money. You know, I've read the Brownfield plans, there's, it's not clear in those plans at least. What we can use the money for, if the money can be used for all of them or geographically specific. So we may need to default to the statute and a legal opinion on how we can use the money.
Okay.
So, would you read, like Electra Voice is one, right?
No, um, River Street, right here.
The gym.
Area here, and then Smith, Smith Street, I believe.
Smith, that's out there, Metal Forum or whatever, is that Metal Forum on Smith?
Yeah, yeah, it's the old, the can of steel.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Electra Voice is a. Well, it's an EPA site, yeah.
Reimbursement in a lot of times.
There's another name.
So what's the deal with Electra Voice?
It's an EPA site, it's something else though, what's it called?
Potential Brownfield.
So it's not listed as.
It's worse, it's the.
What's that, you need to do the same thing and I can't. Superfund, thank you, there we go.
So there's a, so it's a superfund.
Yeah, back in that section behind the building, there's a.
Man, that's federal level, bad.
So the Brownfields are lower, okay. But that's, the superfund is no longer, without having a new owner. We really don't have. So the brownfields are lower, okay, but that's, the superfund is no longer, without having a new owner, um, we really don't have much jurisdiction over it or anymore, do we?
Not really, I mean, I'm sure there's restrictions that he has, where he can't move or dig or disturb the cap.
Yeah.
When was the last time you talked to him, have you talked to him at all?
I don't know, he's got quite a bit of activity right now.
He does.
Yeah.
Just hey, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on.
I talked to him about a couple of different ideas, with the storied space.
Good.
Alright, so to continue, so, let's get that meeting lined up with Fede and Dan and I, and that's a good move forward.
Maybe December.
Yeah, see what Dan's calendar looks like, um, let's do the code enforcement and.
Just see, Dan's got some stuff here, I think that's true.
Yeah, Dan, you wanna talk about code enforcement, which would help, cause Raquel has on her list a specific property for a condemned home, can go down that, we have a hole now.
Just call me the Easter Bunny.
Peter Cottail over there.
I think it's, I mean, Tim's been working on it, and I'm gonna really, you know, I haven't even met the guy Jason yet, but, you know, you've, you've been making leaps and bounds, I don't know if you're doing it personally, but. Um, I think it's a real revenue source, you know, people say that the city's looking pretty clean, so they're not complaining, I'd like to see a real strategic plan on code enforcement, code, uh, revenue. You know, um, and, you know, I mean, I don't want him to be Adolf Hitler out there, but I would like to see a constant flow of violations, cause there's a constant flow of violations out there. And until we get it under control, it's gonna be, uh, I don't really wanna hear him overworked, because I don't expect him to kill himself, he comes in and he does what he does, as long as he's doing it. Same way with handing out tickets as far as code enforcement with traffic, you know, um.
Kelly, what do you got on three oh seven Red Bud here?
Yeah, uh, Rich, I know that we had the meeting, but I totally did not even remember, this specific property is right across from, I think Denny's. Uh, there's literally a tree growing out of the, out of it, and it's been a problem for a while, so I feel like it's just an eyesore, and it's on the main drag, and it, it just irritates me, so, um.
Yeah, I mean, so, I, and you and I talked about this, my philosophy on code enforcement is create like a top five list, and, and prioritize, and just go after those. Because otherwise, if you're complaint driven, you're running around with your, chicken with your head cut off, trying to fix everything in the city, but if you just stay home on one, two, three biggest problems.
Yeah.
Uh, and don't stop till it's resolved, you know?
Yeah.
We talked about that one behind Lowry's forever too, uh, you know, another one, tree growing right out of the middle of the building, we lost a business in this community to Glean because they wouldn't sell or, or fix the property, so.
And that's the problem with code enforcement, I mean, we got landlords that have done absolutely nothing, because there's no initiative, there's nobody shoving a boot in their backside, where's three oh seven at?
Right across the street here, or the garage door that's missing, it's been there forever.
Right across the street.
White House.
Do, do we have any information on that, like, is it condemned, like, I, it has to be condemned, that's why I put that on there, but, like, is there any kind of, like, who owns it?
There's probably a file, and, you know, if you look at the file, it's maybe no activity for a while, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, if you pick your battles and say, hey, these are gonna be our top five, top three, let's do, and just knock them out, and then you have a focus, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah.
A lot of times, like Dan's, Dan made a point, you know, if you're a property owner, and you're not taking care of something, you're not notified, it's okay, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Most people, if they get one letter, they're gonna do something, you know?
Yeah.
I do like the comment you made about having a, a strategic, strategic plan on code enforcement, and I do think they should report to us on what their strategy is going to be.
Well, Rich, the thing about it is, is we've got multiple police officers, we've got multiple employees, we've got multiple people that work down here, you know, I think it's all our responsibility to write down addresses, you know, and I mean. It's not something the code enforcement, it's, it's a blank letter, hey, look, we need, you need some to do, pay some attention to this.
That was my question, has this address been turned over to our code enforcement officer?
Right.
Good question, how do we turn that over to the code enforcement?
It's. We get out here and go today.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'll check. There's like, you know, somebody put like a sticker on it like two years ago, right?
Yeah.
But if there's an increased, like, everybody's on the same page, we want these three properties dealt with.
Well.
Or, yeah, due to, due to specifics.
If there's a renewed kind of focus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's a property on South Red Bud that was supposed to be in a tax sale, and the county was supposed to tear it down, and then they sold it.
Oh, the one on the corner, um, like where, up where that cost from the glass shop, basically?
Oh, no, it's farther down. Not quite that far down.
Oh, on the bottom of the hill.
On the bottom of the hill, it's that big two-story white house.
Dwight. Dwight's old house.
Yeah.
Is that what, well, the thing about it is, it was sold, and now the taxes haven't been paid on it again, and the county was supposed to tear it down five years ago. But they didn't have any money, cause they were tearing Mercy down.
Well, I, I think going back to what Tim says, what we need to do is look at, uh, if there has been letters of intent, or whatever you wanna call them. And, and there are specifics that we need to start looking at, and this is one of them, that, that went all down here on Red Bud, is another prime.
Yeah. I'm hearing.
So, you know, in Lowry's, we got three right there that we just came up with, so yeah, let's start dealing with that.
Yeah.
And I'm hearing, a common thread, I'd cross all those, they're all on the corridor, the main corridors in town.
What's the address of that one, Larry, do you know?
I, I don't know, it's next to, I think it's next to Garcia's house right there, isn't it?
So you, where Smith Street, or no, Chicago Street meets Red Bud Trail, you'd basically, if you were coming down Chicago towards Red Bud Trail, and you kept going straight, you'd run into that house, basically, is the house they're talking about. I'm pretty certain, right?
On Chicago?
No, it's on Red Bud, but if you have the stop sign on Chicago to turn onto Red Bud, you'd be looking right at it, just to.
It's on Red Bud.
We have a little bit of an attitude too with, you know, if you call dispatch and you have a complaint, I would like dispatch to just take the complaint, you know, rather than playing this, this game. You know, and just give the complaint to the code enforcement officer, because Tim, I think a lot of complaints have been made, and, I mean, that's what you always get, and I, I disregard ninety percent of that. But a lot of complaints have been made, and there's not been a lot of follow-up, and I'm not talking about the last six or nine months, I'm talking about over the long term, and nobody wants to narc anybody out too much. I mean, I drive around and write stuff down.
But there's nothing wrong with giving us an address, we can give it to code enforcement, and get a determination, is it in code or out of code?
Right, right. Well.
It's not lawn mowing season anymore, maybe we can start working on some other properties.
Right, but you know, the, the thing about it is, is our officers, I want our, I want our officers to participate in this, cause they're driving around, they can write down the addresses.
Give us the addresses.
Alright.
Then that way, the pedestrians and the, the people of the city, I mean, I don't think it's too much to ask, if there's something extreme.
No, and we re. We rewrote all these ordinances two years ago, to put them in the best position possible for enforcement, and we spent a lot of money to do it.
I do know, I had a meeting with the current code enforcement guy, and he said that he does drive around, and he takes notes of different properties, so, yeah. But I think, from what I understand, is I, going back to what Rich said, is maybe we should like work as a commission and come up with the five, um, properties that we, that are most, you know. That we care about getting, taken care of.
Yeah, then I think, once you knock out that five, you get five new ones, and you can track the progress.
Right.
Yeah.
And you're concentrating on the worst properties, the ones that have the most dramatic effect.
Alright.
If you live on that block, it sucks to live on that block, cause this house is like, you know?
Got it, that's good, yeah, I like that.
I will, um, sorry, Patrick.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, the Chip, uh, Chippewa Street that we talked about, you remember, I drove by that, and it had been grown up, everything, they must, uh, uh, I forget, Jason. He must have talked to them or something, cause it is clean, and it's not like totally done, but I was like, that's progress, so I was super happy with that, and, yeah.
That's a good thing that you could call on that out.
It's good, appreciate the positive feedback.
Yeah, I appreciate, I wanted to say, um, for that home, I didn't, sometimes I get nervous up here, so I totally like spaced it when, um, Dan congratulated you for the property on, uh, River Street. I wanted to say thank you, cause I appreciate, that's what the community looks at, like, yes, finances, all these things, like, they all matter, but I feel like, uh, when you're driving through a city, you look at the things that you can see, you know, and. Um, so I really appreciate you working on that.
Dan, you had property sales on here, you wanna, that's probably a good.
Well, we've been working on several of them, and we're not really seeming to get rid of any of them, and I don't know what we need to do different. I think we need to buy some for sale signs and a phone number, and put on all these individual properties, and do we really need an RFP? You know, I mean, what do we need to do to move forward getting rid of these vacant lots? Um, a gentleman bought that house and tore it down and built two houses up there by the cemetery, and he got mad at me, cause I called him three times, he thought I was calling to bug him, and I was calling him to say thank you. You know, cause he's building two really small individual houses up there, you know, and we've got the same, we haven't sold anything.
Well, alright, so, there's a strategy to the North Side neighborhood that has been developed with the North Side neighbors. And if you look back, the strategy's working pretty brilliantly, because we decided we're gonna invest in a quality of life center in double the size of Victory Park. And concentrate on the quality of life of the neighborhood, we invested, we built a pavilion, we refurbished, we used philanthropic funds, and we have an amazing park in, in this neighborhood. Which signals to everybody that there's a quality of life improvement here. Now, we're going through the neighborhood, and we're using, uh, several hundred thousand dollars, uh, to demo and offer home repairs. So what this does is it, to Commissioner George's comment, it takes that one property that you're focused on that's caving in, and it takes it away, and it takes that bad economic signal out of that neighborhood. And it allows all those properties that are next to it to rise up, because there's not this blight on the, on a high-profile corner. In the meantime, we're, we're going to affect twenty to twenty-five people's lives in a home improvement by allowing them to build equity in their homes. So whether it's an HVAC improvement, or a roof, or windows, or something else, or act, any type of accessibility. They're going to have a significant improvement, which this area is already appreciated in price pretty dramatically, which we're also concerned about, cause we don't wanna price people up. But people will build equity in their, in their homes, there'll be more of a homeowner's culture over there, okay? That's what we, that's a success story to date, adjacent to that is the river, we're putting amenities on the riverfront, we're looking at more access from this neighborhood. So, um, when, right now, a lot of my time is consumed with CDBG, home repair and demo, I can't just implement like hundreds of programs.
Sure.
And there has to be a focus and a strategy to do it well, so I am very confident that, um, in twenty twenty-five, we will launch an RFP for these lots.
Okay.
And that we will get a lot of people interested in building, we want to, uh, give them guidance on what kind of square footage or homes or price point. Uh, but I already have, I've already developed relationships with contractors who are ready to go when we are ready.
Okay.
But, um, I can't just, you know, one of the things about getting grant money, which we've gotten, you know, over five million dollars of grant money since I've been here. One, one of the responsibilities is you have to use that money responsibly, and if you don't, you don't get more grant money, so I cannot, I have to put a lot of energy in the CDBG and the home repair. Everything's gotta be a success story, so, to your point is, yeah, we are sitting on these lots, but we've done all this work to prep these lots, they're gonna be premium lots by the time we get around to the RFP. We're gonna get more movement on sale and construction because of all the work we did on the front end. So there is a strategy, it's, it's called a neighborhood redevelopment strategy that we're employing.
Um, not that you need one more thing to look into for this, but when I was with Hahn the other day, I didn't get a chance to talk to him about it, and I, I'm really interested in it. They have something called a housing tip that he referenced, might be an opportunity to grab some capital on those, if it operates like any other tip, um, related to new home construction.
Yeah.
So.
I'll look at it.
Yeah, twenty, I mean, twenty twenty-five, yeah, I mean, I, I like to think we're talking about it in twenty twenty-five, it's right around the corner, so.
The, just one, one other point, I mean, cause Dan and I have talked about this a while, for a while, putting up for sale sign doesn't really help the neighborhood. Because if you put up for sale sign when the neighborhood's not really primed to go, somebody's just gonna buy and sit on that land until, until, at which point it's buildable, and they get their money back. So, I feel like a lot of the work we've done with the park, the neighborhood repair, the demos, the riverfront, will make all these lots more marketable. When we go to the market, I think they'll move, and, I mean, the neighborhood's already come such a long way, we have a great relationship with the, the neighbors. I think the North Side will be a great success story, it already is, but you just have to have a little patience.
It's a fixed thing, but not a quick fix, it, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little bit of time, yeah.
Not a quick, it didn't go down quick either, it took a long time to go down and, and get to the blight, it's gonna, it takes a long time to come up, but.
Yep.
There's no question about this neighborhood, it's gonna be a strong neighborhood like it was before, and, um, we just need a little patience.
I'm good with that, you got it.
Flow meters?
Flow meters.
What do you got on that? We're meeting in Water Sewer next week, so it's a, it's a good time to throw it on the agenda.
We need to, we need to get as many out there, he's got an operator now, did she get her license?
She's not eligible to take her test until next November, oh geez.
Oh.
Do you wanna shoot the address list for us to talk about in?
I don't know what it is.
Or if you could give us some ballpark?
There's a lot on Post Road, I mean, your water, your, your sewer, your water guy knows, you know, he's been here, Mike knows, um, who hasn't got flow meters, I don't know if McCartney's got a flow meter or not.
Okay.
You know, Craig.
Out here on River Street, that would be definitely one, he drilled his own stinking well, and then I know when they built Post Road, they all had their own water wells out there, and, uh.
Okay.
Red Bud Roots has still got its own water well, so I don't know if there's a flow meter on that or not, that's right on the corner there where McCartney was, dirty little secrets.
Would you mind having Craig? Would you mind just having Craig check on those, so, and maybe he can, hey, give us an update at Water Sewer?
Oh, the water guy knows about them, um, I mean, when I was on Water and Sewer, I was pursuing it pretty hard, because that's a very strong source of revenue. I don't know if we can rewrite things to shut down them drilling water wells out there or not, Tim, that would be long-term.
They're not supposed to be drilling wells out there, that's a violation, so.
Yeah, I think that's a.
Can't do it.
No, not allowed to do that.
I was just saying, I thought that was, I thought that was a direct violation.
Yeah, that's an Eagle thing.
Yeah. It's part of the watershed, no, you can't draw, drill wells out there.
They can't drill them? But they're still sucking water out of their wells.
There might be wells that are grandfathered in, that are loud, that might be the case.
Pre-existing water wells.
And I'm not too sure that if McCartney has a active well out there, that he would, he was grandfathered in, I don't know.
Wellhead Protection Program, that's what, that's related to.
Well, yeah, let's not even go there, cause he's everybody's buddy and he's not mine.
Alright, so, we've made a ton of progress, guys, um, so really, before we jump into Tim's list, the only two that I'm seeing that we need to talk about still are. Police vehicle capital planning and compensation for committees.
I think, well, and, and based on, kinda, just add one more to that, based on conversations I've been having at the Legion, there's been a lot of question on the Thrill in the Hill, and I know that.
Oh, Thrill in the Hill, sorry, I, sorry.
I got that one.
I wanna make sure that we cover that, as far as like what our plan is, because it's gone beyond our borders, and now it's become a conversation in other cities about, and, and this is all for the positive, because they're saying, where is it? We want it, we wanna be there, we wanna come, and that's just more revenue for the city in regards to population coming to visit, so.
Thrill in the Hill, let's start there.
So, number one topic is that we need to repair the, the, the platform, that's what I was trying to think.
I think, from what I got out of the conversation, the, the, the repair part of the platform is not something that we can even bother to. The repair part of the platform is not something that we can even bother to look at. We need basically.
Replace it.
A new.
Oh, okay.
New platform, I mean.
Thirty to forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're it.
I thought it was fifteen grand.
Big money, as I remember.
Oh.
You know, the repair thing, you know.
Better off just kidding.
Yeah, putting an extra couple nails and bolts into uh the existing wood planks just isn't working out. And uh you know, there was talk about permanent type structure.
I was thinking metal structure.
Metal structures, basically, and and if I remember correctly. The reason we canceled was because of that cost.
Yes, correct.
Well, at the time, we, because we were also, we had not a manager that knew what the heck they were doing and they were telling everybody we were broke and we weren't.
So, so the hard part with this is, you know, when we looked at the recap of costs, right, we can't, the drain on the staff here was immense. Immenseful, and there's a lot of overtime and focus that we we kinda, I, from where I said, I mean, I wanna do it again, but. I don't want the city to, you know, we might delegate things out, but I don't want to be using a bunch of city payroll. To do it cuz it was incredibly expensive, and we can't ask them to volunteer.
You're talking about two peo- there was three main people that did that and two of them are no longer working here and have not been replaced.
Right.
So.
Yeah, so it'd be even more of a strain.
Now, that Liv Buchanan Group wants to own that as a fundraising opportunity for their operations. Which I wouldn't mind it living there, but.
Still doesn't cover the cost.
On the same, it may be, we have to make a capital investment. My biggest concern is that capital investments recoup when you don't have to pay all of the overtime we did. If we have to go into this paying all of the level of overtime we're paying. That's where it gets too painful for me.
So if they're gonna spearhead the 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 man, the man hours for it, then you're still, then you would be on board. If they're gonna say they're gonna take care of the volunteerism, they're gonna take care of the scheduling, they're gonna handle.
And tell us how we're, you know, how we're gonna pay for things.
Right.
Well, the the hill is the other part too, because that was donated, that's donated time from.
Affordable, was it, is it still, did they still do it, or did the city build it?
They were still, like, the city guys were going out there and helping them, but they're the ones that donated all that time.
For the winter.
And this, yeah, and that was always a concern is when do they start charging us as well?
Who was donating that?
Affordable.
Affordable?
Affordable asshole.
The labor, the labor.
The labor, they.
The thing about it is, this was a feel-good thing from the very begi- very beginning. And everybody takes me the wrong way on this, so I'm gonna re-explain this. I wanted to break even, Bill Marks lied, let's just call it what it is about the accounting practices.
Yep.
We bought sand, we didn't pay for sand for the Thrill on the Hill cuz we used it.
Right.
There was all kinds of fudging and messing, okay? City Hall was shut down for the Thrill on the Hill, shut down. The chamber would not take it on, the lions would not take it on.
Right.
We have, we volunteered, we could've helped with the thrill, but organizing it, it's a year-round project.
Oh, yeah.
We never were gonna make money on it, so as far as it being a fundraiser, it is not.
Right.
It was a feel-good thing that was very exciting, that could've been kind of nice, but nobody wanted to do the work. And the taxpayers carried it, so I mean, you know, and the taxpayers, you're looking at them.
I'm sitting.
We're all one, we're all, we're taxpayers too.
Yeah, I mean, I fought to choose a nail.
I'll be honest, the taxpayers were pissed that we didn't continue to invest in it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm telling, yeah, they they, the communication is, they don't look.
Pissed about their water and sewer bill.
They are, but they're equally as passionate about doing it, I'm telling you, this is, I'm at the Legion every week and all I hear is, when is it coming back? When is it coming back? They, uh but my thing is, no, but to my point is, they they're not looking at it as, I'm paying for it as a taxpayer, they're looking at it. I'm willing to pay for it, let's do it kinda thing.
Dan, if there is.
It's the opposite thinking.
If there is a path forward, what does that path forward look like to you?
Every one of them guys at the Legion, where were they at when it come to working on it and volunteering to help?
I don't know, but that's not the concern.
They piss in the moment because you block off the thing, I mean, but the earth's gonna have that.
They can still get in there, I watch them.
So I mean, you know.
I I mean.
I'm hearing from, I'm hearing from.
Things that that the the city, it it wa- it was good somewhat for the city. It's just goes back to the Labor Day celebration and, you know, you guys, you guys were pretty much.
No, we weren't.
Real young or nonexistent.
I remember when.
I remember.
I was there.
I was there.
That program, it was great, it was great for the city, and we had a lot of volunteers. The Thrill on the Hill, it doesn't have volunteers, and Patrick brought up a good thing, you know, the Liv Buchanan. Hey, let's let's reach out to them and say, hey, listen, uh we got ticket booths, we got. Concerts that we gotta set up, we got uh you know, beer gardens over here, we got this, that and the other. You need to be, you know, or that group needs to be functioning in those. Instead of the four ladies down at City Hall sitting there working their keisters off, selling tickets and wristbands. And you know, as far as the construction.
About city money, like, this is money that you have to be careful with just who you're letting in that booth, you know.
Yeah. Oh, I will totally agree with that because there probably was some people in there that, you know.
Well, the thing is, we live in a world.
Wristbands, there's one in my pocket.
There's a, there's a, the world we live in now, we can make it cashless, I mean, this is just, let's be honest, I don't wanna hear this.
Well, they can't pay.
Everybody knows how to pay cashless, everybody.
The last time she put in the square.
Right.
Because it was a lot easier because people were walking up and like, I think actually on her, when they were right there, they ran out of cash.
Yeah.
Right.
Because we didn't have that, so she implemented that last time and it worked out really well, I, Thrill on the Hill is fantastic. Does it kill us? Absolutely, but it needs to be a collaboration, it can't just be City Hall. And it is a year-long event, it takes months of weekly meetings, trying to figure out logistics of everything.
Right.
But when you don't have the help and you don't have, when you have volunteers that don't show up, City Hall staff gets thrown in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, and that, yeah, we can't afford that.
But then, and the other, on the flip side of that, Dan's absolutely correct. Because they, you know, you got the people over here, I'll say the Legion, that are sitting there that are all for it. Then you got the people that are sitting, you're running all that sand into our drains and blah blah blah, and you know. And they're kicking, you know, they're they're kicking out the bad side of it. So it's it's a, it's basically a halfway win situation, but you're still losing, you know, and as far as.
Always that chance it's gonna be a bad weekend if it's gonna rain.
Oh, yeah, if it's cold and stuff like the one year.
Yeah, one year it was.
It was so miserable cold that, you know, I slid down the hill in a wetsuit. Cuz I had one, but I mean, you know, yeah, you did it. But it's one of those things, I think, uh. That is good for Buchanan.
It's great for.
I I I I just think it is, I think it's something that we need to look at, I think it's something that we need to throw at that particular board.
So that.
And then start planning on it now.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, I mean, so, from where I said. If we can find a path forward without it being incredibly taxing on City Hall. And us spending tons and tons of overtime with the DPW guys. You know, I don't mind looking at the cost of a new platform, things like that.
See, there's another problem there, everything that they're doing, they're not doing something else, you know, and we complain. I mean, I'm gonna be negative, I'm gonna be Mister Negative on this, you know, as far as Legion, you know. Because this is where our job comes in. This was another feel-good idea that wasn't thought through, and the perfect example is the freaking dog park. You know, it's a perfect example.
Oh, yeah.
So I I agree with you, I think as long as we get the focus back to, if if the if the people want it. Then the people, the volunteers, whatever, whoever's involved, figure out a way to make it happen.
The Chamber.
Chamber's not gonna do it.
The Lions.
Chamber will not do it.
Well, then, exactly, then then good, goodbye.
You can count on it.
Don't talk to us about it, the Lions, the boosters, you know, there's all kinds of groups out there. We could donate the property, you know, this is the mentality I want us to get.
Alright, so you're on board with, what I'm hearing is you're on board with letting those groups try to find a path forward.
No, I'm not on board, no, I'm not.
What are you saying?
Well, if you're listening to me, the thing about it is, nobody's gonna take it over, you're trying to make a path for the city to take it over.
No, I don't want to see, I've been sitting here saying, I don't want to see.
There's nobody gonna take it over. I'm realistic, you're not, I'm sorry, and I'm not trying to insult you.
I'm I'm telling you, Liv Buchanan has been begging us to do it.
Of course they have.
Okay, so now you have somebody at the table.
Do you have any idea how much work it is?
Most of those people actually were those volunteers and fundraisers, they know it.
They were.
I mean, I volunteered at it many, many years, so I do have an idea, I've had to fundraise for it, I've donated to it, I've volunteered at it. I got a pretty decent idea.
Gonna be against it no matter what.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Alright, well, the thing is, if Liv takes it on.
City wants it.
Again, we all have to keep in mind that they're gonna need funding to operate, so that could be a mute point if.
They they want it to come back, there's a lot of people, I mean, I get chastised, Facebook crap.
However, in our discussions with Liv, they feel like they could build it to be a a significant fundraiser.
I agree.
Perfect.
And then that, and that's where we have to start and do it.
People.
Yeah.
Involved, that know how to grow the event, and they, it gives them an opportunity to prove their value there.
So we can, if we decide to fund Liv, then we can have this as an item to come back to us with.
So the taxpayers are still funding it.
Not necessarily.
I really, I I I, I'm stuttering now, I'm sorry. I gotta try to, help me get it through my head, how this could ever be a significant fundraiser.
Talk to Randy Henderson.
Yeah, you can do that outside of this meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's never gonna happen, because the money, look at the money involved to build it and what you can charge. You can't charge enough to recoup. You cannot, it's impossible to do.
Yeah, but if they could break even, if you can break even on the first year, you're ahead of the game, my opinion.
They can come back to us with that and we we have to keep in mind, we're gonna have to buy the sand cuz we use the sand for the roads anyways in the winter time. And then they're gonna ask us to replace that platform.
That that.
That's probably what we have to be prepared for.
So we're doing.
Structure is what.
So we're doing it.
No, the biggest cost of that whole event is the man hours that go into it from our our staff's labor, that's massive.
Thousand dollars for a platform, we could buy playground.
I don't know, I don't know, Dan, I don't know the answer.
No, it was stated down here, little, little.
No, that was to repair, that was to repair the curb.
No, 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 she talked, she gave us some numbers on buying one.
She did.
About metal.
You know, my memory is bad on a lot of things, but the numbers are there and, you know, I don't know how to convince you guys. That you need to tell people it was a thing and it fell down.
It might still be, it might still be the answer.
Well. I would say, I don't want.
Into it and Liv Buchanan.
I I think if there's a path forward, it's through Liv and we.
My opinion.
We let them bring the information to us, we're not making a decision on it today, so. Alright, Mark, you got. Police vehicles next.
Yeah, I thought there was a, this, at one point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, there was a vehicle that we know that is aging out, right, that we need to start to.
I spoke to Harvey about that yesterday, they they're all for having some kind of a vehicle rotation plan where. Cuz e- even the, one of our better ones is getting, you know, it's getting long in years as well, we've only had it a couple of years and it's. Already had some issues and the only way you're gonna get out of it is if you. Get rid of a lot of your surplus stuff and then start funding rotation of your police vehicles.
This is basic capital planning anyways.
Formula is, I don't know, but.
I thought we, I thought we authorized this already, Tim.
Not for this year. They have a capital plan and we just, we bought one, what, two years ago?
Was it two years ago?
It's already a couple of years old.
Yeah, that wasn't the rotation.
The elder statesman and the group of the police cars, they're starting to have issues already.
Yeah, I guess they've got solar panels on two of them to keep the batteries.
Yeah, you can't keep the batteries charged and we've got the white elephant out there and one over there at Wesner's.
Yeah.
Why do we save this one?
Pardon?
Why do we keep this one?
We shouldn't.
Nice segue into surplus property sale and equipment, I think.
Exactly, I've talked to Mike Baker, we've got chippers, we've got pickup trucks, we've got uh plows. Trucks, yeah, plows, I walked through that buyer of the wastewater plant, there's equipment down there. We could do alright and it'd be liberating to get rid of a lot of equipment around here.
Do, we can't give you authorization right now, but at, do we have to wait till the next meeting to tell you to start getting rid of it?
I think.
Already told me.
I think as a general consensus, everybody is on board with getting rid of crap we don't need.
Sense of moving it back into the new building.
That's the other part of it. When we move into that new building, we gotta take junk out of there to put down there, it's just like, well, I I think uh. Guy. Guy uses that white car to do, but I mean.
Code inspections.
Yeah.
And I, we have seventeen thousand dollars in the budget to get a used car across the road here for him to drive around and be inspected with it. Or we don't need, we don't need a forty thousand dollar vehicle.
No, no, he needs something.
Even our code guy could use a similar type of vehicle.
I was gonna say.
Well, even with the municipal, if you have a seventeen thousand dollar used car, then like for travel, for conferences and stuff. City Hall employees could use that instead of being reimbursed for mileage.
Yeah, sixty-two cents or whatever you get a cow.
I mean, and, you know, I mean, we do have police vehicles that, I mean, I asked to get rid of it a long time ago, the white elephant.
I'll work with Harvey on getting a rotation plan going on police cars, and we should probably do the same with others.
Go ahead and start getting rid of everything.
Yeah, I agree.
I I yeah, totally agree, if if we got surplus up there, let's sell it, I mean, even for scrap.
Yeah.
What the heck, I mean, you drive up there.
Not insuring them either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For insurance.
Uh, there's, there's a lot to be said, and you know, when you talk about waste. We have, we have a lot of waste in that compared area, in that area, so.
And the the repairs you put into these old cars.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't know how many bills I put across my desk that.
We've been seeing it.
Well, cop cars, you know.
Yeah, cop cars.
Cop cars inherently, because number one, they run almost twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
I mean, you aren't gonna find any good cop that's gonna shut his car off. I mean, it's either gonna be, it's either gonna be for the heat or it's gonna be for the cooling, and so. They'll shut them off and then they drive, pu- pu- put it around town, you know.
Stop, start, start, start.
Yeah, and they're all high-capacity engines, so.
Okay.
Okay, we have our marketing orders.
How many vehicles uh do we own?
That's a good question, I don't know, probably too many.
Yeah.
For just like the police.
I'd have to pull out our insurance uh listing and it'll it'll tell us.
Okay.
I think you you drive behind the police station.
There's one in every.
Be a good way to start getting rid of everything.
Yep.
Yeah.
Be an instantaneous list of what you're insuring.
And I'm like Kala, I mean, you can go across the street here and buy a good used vehicle. I mean, even if it's a, if it's a four-passenger, five-passenger van, you know, cheaper than you can have Tim Wesner fix it.
Right.
And it's not down there.
Personnel policy revisions?
Personnel policy, okay, we've been through the union negotiations, we've revised several of the personnel policies relating to. Health insurance, sick days, uh vacations. I'd like to carry the momentum and go into our non-union personnel policy and finish the deed.
Yes.
Please do.
Okay.
Municipal bond agent?
Municipal bond agent, uh we have several million dollars in debt right now. We've got rate studies that we've done on our water and sewer rates. Uh we have a bo- DPW bond that we need to file annual reports on for the next five years. Uh we have a bo- uh finan- financial council with Baker Tilly, his name was Andy Campbell, he's now with another firm. We'd like to continue to use him and his new firm, and they will do those annual financial disclosures relating to our DPW bond. And uh uh it's like a thousand dollars a year to keep us in line with our bond regulations, general obligation bond. And then going forward, not this fiscal year, but twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven. We'll need some financial advisors to ensure that our water sewer rates are proper, that they're legitimate. And that we are uh monitoring our debt properly. And so I would like to bring a proposal to the commission at some point where we do retain that firm for the. Twenty-five, twenty-six year and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and it's about s- six thousand dollars a year for water, six thousand for sewer. So overall, it's twelve thousand dollars a year to retain those firm, that firm.
And it's paid for out of the enterprise fund, right?
It would be paid for out of the fund, I believe, I'd have to check it out, but I think it's correct. So I'd like to bring that to the commission in the, in the coming month or so. I don't think I need to on the thousand dollar one, but uh. The twelve thousand dollar one is probably shit.
Uh, letter of intent?
Did I say all that right, Calla? And they, they know our finances inside and out and them and I have met with them a few times already. I, I think with all of the bonds and loans we have out there, it behooves us to have good financial counsel on, on retaining.
And that, and like you said, Andy Campbell. He knows everything.
Yeah.
He knows, he knows our structure, yeah.
You're better on all, you know him very well.
And, uh, so.
That, that's all I have on that one.
Okay. Letter of intent.
Okay, if you recall, uh, last January, February, we brought in a firm called ABM and they identified, uh, cost savings for us going forward, where the cost savings of the projects would pay for the, would pay for the projects, guaranteed savings. Uh, they are, have now provided us with a letter of intent, uh, to perform a technical audit. And they would deliver an implementation agreement with a scope of work for these facility upgrades with guaranteed energy savings. They would prepare, prepare and bid the projects. Uh, the one caveat is, uh, if we do not proceed with their projects, we would be on the hook for forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars to them. And if we do proceed with the project, there are no financial obligations. And so, that's not a decision I wanna make on my own, but I would like some commission, uh, directive on, or, you know, some kind of a path to go forward on that.
Yeah, well, it looks like we're either gonna pay for something that we don't get or pay for something that we get, right?
Yeah, so the way I understood it, yeah, so the way I understood it is like, all of the HVAC equipment that needs to be replaced, all lights, like, you know, all the inefficiencies in the existing buildings, that could be a project. The water meter change-out stuff was, was one they talked about.
There's some, there's some solar in there.
Talked about solar project at the waste treatment plant. If we need to build a building in some capacity, that would be a project. So like, we, let's say, on a, on a grand, a grandiose scale, if for some reason we decided the best plan was to consolidate City Hall, the Police Department, Fire Department, all into one space. They would, that would be a project. I guess you could just do one of those as a project. I mean, there's, we need to give them a project if we want to work with them.
Right.
Or we need to tell them, we don't have a project.
Or we, or we, or we lose that.
Or, or, or you delay, or you.
Yeah.
Whatever.
So what, I mean, what do you think would be the most impactful need for us if we did do something?
I'd have to wait and see their technical audit.
Okay.
And that's what they proposed up to, audit, audit all your facilities. Another question, I, are we even gonna stay in this building?
That was, uh.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that we, we would use that to determine if we would stay in this building, right? Cause they're saying, it's gonna cost you, I don't know, picking a random number, hundred grand in, in upgrades to keep City Hall efficient, I don't know, right?
Yeah. And, yeah, why def- like, poor money of this, that.
And that's what we determine if we keep this or sell it then?
If we head outside, head over to.
I mean, Dan and I were talking.
Is there an option of going to I and M?
I don't.
Is there an option of going out to the county building or not? There's not, is there?
There's not anymore. Indirectly, there is not an option to go there anymore.
So I mean, we.
So, i- it, it's something I, I've had here and I just wanted to bring it up to the commission and I, I'm not sure which way to go forward on it.
I mean.
Is it something we need to start talking about, Tim, as far as revamping this building and it adding on to this building or?
Can we keep this site? Do we, it all goes with the fire, police, what are we gonna do going forward?
I think we consolidate, that's what I was thinking. I think we put it all in the same building, police, fire, and city.
We'll learn how much we end up saving or how much it's gonna cost us.
Well.
We get a plan out of it is our worst case, I guess.
You don't know if you're gonna keep your Police Department, you don't know if you're gonna keep your Fire Department.
We know we don't want the Police Department where it's at. I think, we've been talking about that for years. But we don't have anywhere to put them.
Well, I know.
Nobody wants.
But, yeah, uh, that drive-in up there is not, you know, let's sell coffee up there or something.
Yeah, we can get that on tax, that's a great building to be on, the tax.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dan wants pharmacy in there.
And, you know, the consolidation, the consolidation type thing with City Hall. You know, I say even the Fire Department, but, you know, we talked about that prior. Uh, we, we do have to keep some kind of fire facility within the city to maintain a fire rating.
Yeah.
And to tie the Police Department into the same structure, in my opinion, I mean, it's been proven, you know, through smaller municipalities and whatever, that it all works, so, I don't know.
This might be one of those two. I don't know if Rich'll like me saying this one, but like, this kind of facility could go on the FEDM site, we may be able to tap into some brownfield funding to pay for it because of the condition of that site, as well as getting some land grant money on the demo and kinda combine a bunch of efforts there.
Police have their low stationary place.
City does this, that, and this story. You, you may have something over here that.
Okay, that's all I have on that one.
Alright.
Since it is, uh, having some trouble.
Yeah, I should say if they're having trouble.
Alright, last topic is compensation. Last topic's compensation.
I like that conversation.
Yeah, should be fun one.
So, we, we've spoken previously, but for the whole commission, we are asking Calla to do some research for us to look at what commissioners get paid, cause currently as we sit, I know when it hits my check and the, and you think of the amount of work and the effort we have to put in as, as commissioners in the city. Uh, it doesn't compensate you for your time, that's for sure. So, I think we need to be in more alignment with what the current pay is for other cities that are equal size.